Meeting, I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. We are streaming this morning's meeting live on KPTS Channel 8 and also on the county's Facebook and YouTube channels. Commissioners still have Plexiglas barriers dividing them. We are socially distanced here in this room and we are also wearing masks. I've got mine here on my wrist. There was no staff meeting yesterday, so we have no update for you to report there. But we do have a few special guests here in the audience today, and so I'd like to invite our county treasurer, Lynda Kazier, up to the podium.
Good morning, Lynda.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you, Kate. As you know, the Treasurer's Office, the Tag and Tax Department, we pride ourselves in jeans charities. And so this month, we selected our Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, Clowns. They go out to the elementary schools, teach children about fire prevention, and it's very important. So I would like to invite my clowns up here. And Chief. It is my pleasure and my honor to present with $300.
Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure to give you this.
Oh, thank you.
I've got something here for you, too.
Oh, okay. Oh, my. I got new bling. It's a dollar sign. But we've contributed to, right at 80 organizations, and we've donated over $21,000 since 2013. We started this in October of 2013. And it's just an honor to give forward to our community, to pay up forward, and we're very thankful that the staff enjoys doing it and we like wearing those jeans.
Lynda, thank you so much. You've done that for a number of years, and a number of charities, a number of organizations have been recipients.
Yes, sir.
We've all probably had a privilege of joining you for a few of the presentations of the checks.
I think so.
And it's been, it's really good what you all do, and thanks to your crew and your staff for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clowns, do you have anything to say?
Thank you very much. I got a present for you. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all you, thank you, Chief, for, thanks, Chief, for allowing these young men to be clowns.
All right, and if you were not able to join us last week to drop off e-waste or any unused or old electronic waste, we have our opportunity, another opportunity again this week, beginning tomorrow through Saturday, at the Sedgwick County West Yard. We'll be there from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And I just wanted to provide a little update from the first weekend of 2020 to the first weekend of 2018. You can see that we've had record numbers of vehicles dropping off material and dropping it off safely. So we, it was reported that we did not hit over 1,000 vehicles until the sixth day of 2018. And you can see on the third day, we already hit over 1,000 vehicles. So we're well ahead of our information from last year and the waste that was dropped off. And so we'll see how much more we get over the next three days. But it's very good news that it's a welcome program for the community, and it's free of charge, and it's fairly touchless as well. Staff will come in and remove the waste from your vehicles. So we also know that on Saturday, we had double lines. It was so busy and so packed that we had double lines waiting, and then they opened early, and in the first five minutes, there were 64 vehicles coming through. So definitely something that people took advantage of, and it might be because, you know, because of COVID-19, we were staying home, so we were spring cleaning a little bit more, and people took advantage of it because of that. Also, on the agenda this morning, commissioners, we have meeting minutes, appointments and resignations to various advisory boards. There's the annual JAG grant presentation, a COVID-19 update, a grant for the Department on Aging. You'll have a discussion related to the CARES Act, and then we have a report of the Board of Bids and Contracts. So it'll be a busy meeting this morning. Chairman, I will let you get started.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Welcome, everybody, to the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners, County Commission, Wednesday, August 19th. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invocation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meisner.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you've all received a copy of the emails that we've received. If there are any comments on those, I don't-
Receive and file.
Second.
Receive and file the comments that we received by email. Motion to second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Commissioners, also, we have three people sign up for the public comment, so we will entertain them right now. First up, I believe, is Tanya Hudson. Hello, Tanya. Good morning, Tanya. Please state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes.
All right. Tanya Hudson, 8613 West Thurman Street, apartment number one, Wichita, Kansas, 67212. Was that everything you asked for? Okay. All right, thank you for having me here today. Before I begin, I would like to point out that my medical rights were violated in order to be here today. I stated a medical exemption at the door downstairs for all of the officers. I have a letter with me from my physician, and I was told that if I did not wear a mask, I would not be allowed to come up and speak. I did agree to wear the face shield, despite the fact that it did cause anxiety for me, because I felt it was important to be here to speak today. In consideration of time constraints, I've taken the liberty of printing various lists and resources. I believe everyone has a copy. On page one, you'll find a list of 34 medical exemptions to which a person should be considered exempt from the mandate of wearing a mask. On page two, you'll find a list of actual medical exemptions in the ordinance, which are not being honored by various establishments likely to avoid forced closures. On page three, you'll find a list of those establishments. On page four, you'll find a printed screenshot of one method being used to discriminate between healthy individuals and those who have a medical exemption, a button which must be worn within a store for them to be identified as having a medical condition which exempts them from wearing a mask. And for everyone who does not have a copy that I brought today, this is what the button looks like. On page five through nine, you'll find the legal definition of having a disability listed on ada.gov. On page 10, you'll find 36.201, which is the general prohibition of discrimination against individuals who have a disability, which states, "No individual shall be discriminated against on the basis of disability in the full and equal enjoyment of the good services, facilities, privileges, advantages, or combinations of any place of public accommodation by any private entity who owns, leases, or leases to or operates a place of public accommodation." Also, on page six, find Integrated Settings, which is 36.203B, Opportunity to Participate, which states, "A public accommodation shall not deny an individual with a disability an opportunity to participate in such programs or activities that are not separate or different." In the third paragraph on page six, you'll also find Subpart C, Specific Requirements, 36.301 Eligibility Criteria, which states, "A public accommodation shall not impose a criteria that screen out or tend to screen out an individual with a disability. Self-identifying as having a medical exemption with a wearable button is a direct violation of ADA." On page seven, you'll find a legal recourse citizens are entitled to pursue should they believe they're being discriminated against by their government, as well as the relief of monetary damages which can be awarded to individuals who face discrimination. On page eight, taken from hhs.org, you'll find the HIPAA Privacy Rule and text from the site. Our medical privacy is no longer being protected, with being ordered to identify ourselves as exempt while in public. This mandate is in direct violation of the federal law, which provides protection for medical privacy. By not wearing a mask, people are forced to disclose the fact that they have a medical exemption, which is information protected under federal law. Now, let's talk about patient rights. In the third paragraph of page eight, you'll find a list of the 13 common rights afforded to medical patients, several of which are being currently violated. A patient has the legal right to have an advocate present, as well as visitors, but that isn't happening, even though masks allegedly work. This is unacceptable, as it could mean the difference between answers or information provided resulting in death, not to mention the inhumane treatment of isolating those who were already likely terrified in their situation. I experienced this personally. My son had to go to the ER. I was not allowed to be his advocate. He has ADD. Just thought I would throw that in. Moving on to businesses which have been forced to close their doors despite a mandate to wear a mask, allegedly protecting patrons. Even if either the federal or state government is acting within its authority to respond to COVID-19, a state of emergency does not give it free rein to violate constitutional rights. The Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution provides that no person may be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Under the Takings Clause, the government may not take private property for public use without just compensation. Forced closures, which often result in bankruptcy or permanent closure, fall under the Takings Clause. In closing, I'm not going to ask how much longer we're going to be forced to wear a mask. What I'm asking is how long you plan to continue violating our God-given American rights. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hudson. You provide a lot of information, and maybe our staff can review this information and on the, especially on the third page, establishments, restaurants, maybe we can help contact them and make sure that they're aware of the exemptions for masking.
Thank you.
If that would help a little bit, so.
I'm sure it would help a lot. I've heard numerous stories of people that their rights, just as in today, your staff needs to be notified of exemptions. I have a letter from my physician that I offered to provide. I was told it was not necessary. I could either leave or wear a shield.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager, last week, we had someone say very, not exactly the way you said it today, but they said, your opening statement that you were required a mask to enter the building and be at our meeting today. I was told that that was remedied last week. I did some follow-up on that, and I was told that there was changes to our policy that we allow.
It was not, and I received an email. I actually just checked my email this morning, and I could provide that for you. I received an email yesterday indicating that masks were going to be required despite exemptions, and that I could submit information online if I did not feel comfortable wearing a mask. Now, a lot of people would be intimidated by this, and they would either submit their information online, or they would violate their own medical rights by wearing a mask despite whatever the consequences medically might be for them, which is the decision I made to be here, because I felt it was important to speak. But no, this was yesterday at approximately 1:49 in the afternoon that I received follow-up, because I had questioned a week ago when I signed up as to whether I would be forced to wear a mask. And the, I would have to refer to the email for her name, but the lady that I was communicating with indicated that she would have to follow up on that and get back with me. And I did receive the email, which I didn't check until this morning, but I received it yesterday, indicating that medical exemptions would not be honored here.
Okay. Ms. Hudson, I do believe your testimony this morning. I just wanted to state, I guess, from my perspective, my opinion on this is that we, at the government buildings, and I think that includes the courthouse, need to honor the exemptions. And so I thought we solved this last week, and I just want to just state publicly that I'll be following up once again, and it's my desire that we would see exemptions honored at all government spaces, especially this building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today and for providing this information. So this information is relating to a mask. Do you have any information relating to face shields and how it affects disabilities?
I believe there are one in the same, and as on page, I believe, two, the 34, was it page two, that there are, no, page one, sorry, the 34 medical conditions which prevent a person or, you know, a person should be considered medically exempt. We would have to take each one of those 34 exemptions and investigate what the consequences of wearing any sort of face shield or mask could cause. For example, I know one of the, one of the medical conditions is anxiety, another is autism. Again, there's 34, and I don't have them memorized, but there are a host of reasons why having something strapped to your face can cause discomfort and anxiety and stress. And again, I've provided 34 reasons medically why a mask or face shield should not be required.
Thank you. Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman.
Yes.
To Commissioner Howell's question, we share this building with the district courts, and Judge Gering has made it clear to our security staff that people will not come into this building to his courtrooms without mask or face shield. So it's a, we're in a negotiation and a compromise process with the courts, but that is part of the stress that's on our first floor staff, as we share this building with the district courts, and their rules, what they are wanting enforced, doesn't quite align with some of what we're hearing. So just to let you know, Commissioner, we'll continue to work on it.
All right. Thanks for clarifying that. Okay, next up is Kimberly Stringer.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please state your name and your address, and you have up to five minutes.
My name is Kimberly Stringer at 7007 West 12th Street North, Wichita, Kansas, 67212. I am here, do not have a packet for you, and I apologize for that. I'm here with a passion for children. I am an early childhood educator for 35 years and a local children's artist, and I am fighting for our children and for the health of the children, and to please, please, please listen, and hopefully, we can unmask these children. I am here because I made a commitment 35 years ago to protect the health of all children, and that means their mental, emotional, social, and spiritual health. And I have done everything in my power for 35 years. I have started my own preschool 35 years ago, put in a complete outdoor classroom. We use all-natural cleaners, no chemicals. We feed them fresh fruits and vegetables. We do everything in our power to build up the health of the children, because that's who I have decided to serve, and I want to serve their families also. When children come into our place, we clean their hands with their soap and the dispenser, but we also use the all-natural cleaners that I purchase. And to make sure that these kids are getting their optimal health, not only educationally, but physically, we send them outside. They're outside probably 80% of their day, and we have never shut our doors since this whole COVID, not one single day. We have not had one sick child, one parent, one teacher, or one grandparent sick throughout this whole entire thing. There are no masks. We do not wear masks. I believe that they are harming them. About three weeks ago, the reason I'm here is because three weeks ago, I had a preschool parent show up to pick up their child and had two elementary school-aged children with them with masks on because of their day camps were requiring them. When I asked her why they had them on, she pulled off the mask to show me, and I almost got sick. The brown and the green fluid that was right there just from one day of use from chewing, because children are going to do that. They're going to chew on the inside of their mask. They're going to breathe back in that bacteria. I got so sick, I decided it's now time for me to gain a new platform. Let's save these children, you know? I have only one rule in my preschool and have for 35 years. We never hurt anyone on the inside or outside. So I am begging all of you to please do your research on what will happen to the health of the children if we breathe back in that bacteria and all of the fluids and stuff that these kids, and they're going to, they're children, they're going to do that. What it's going to do to their health is going to be catastrophic, and not just that, but emotionally. When I do this to children and I say, "Good job, Johnny," and I go, "Great job, Johnny," the difference emotionally to their psyche is unbelievable. And we grew up with that. We got that affirmation from other people. We got that affirmation from our teachers, and now they're going to get this. And you're going to see children, guys, in the next several years, that are going to walk around with no expressions, because they don't get to share those expressions, they don't get to see those expressions, and they don't know how to look at the eyes for expressions. And I'm going to fight, and I'm going to do everything I can now. I've done this platform of teaching for 35 years, and I will continue to teach with every fiber of my being, but now I have entered a new phase of fighting for the health of the children, the whole health, not just the physical health. You know, I have always said, what goes in is going to come out. You put in health, you're going to get out health. But you put in that bacteria and stuff, you're going to get out poison, and you're going to see the effects of it when those kids are cranky and crying and aggressive and angry and sad and depressed. And that is my goal, is to speak for the voiceless children, and I'm praying that you guys, you guys can. I heard yesterday that KDHE has a doctor that's now fighting for children to wear masks from ages five and up, and I'm asking that you guys can please, please stop that. Please stop that and let the children breathe. Let them get outside. Let them touch. We, little babies crawl on the floor. That's how they build up their immune system. They put things in their mouth. They're touching things. They're touching germs. And I'm just begging that you allow our children in Wichita, Kansas, and the county, please keep their health. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Kimberly. I appreciate your passion, and thanks for what you do for the children, too.
Are there any questions?
No, I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Representative Stephanie Jaeger.
Thank you.
State your name and address, please, and you have up to five minutes.
Sure. Representative Stephanie Jaeger, 4480 South Meridian. I'm good. Well, first, good morning. Stephanie Jaeger, I'm a representative in South Wichita. Many of you have worked with me, and you've spoken with me about community issues. I believe strongly that good public policy has nothing to do with partisanship, but with character. True public servants will always find a way forward, and many of us on this board have done just that. I'm here to speak to you today because later on in this meeting, you're going to be asked to remove me from the Mental Health Advisory Board. I was made aware of this action after being alerted to Facebook comments Commissioner O'Donnell made after being criticized for appointing me to this spot because of my party affiliation. This has come up time to time since the appointment. Instead of being professional, Michael announced publicly that I'd been unappointed. I called his office and was told he'd asked for my records the day before. A letter came the next day informing me that I was removed effective immediately. I didn't learn till later that this was actually going to be brought up before all of you. Commissioner O'Donnell will tell you that I never attended a meeting. What he won't tell you is that after my appointment in July, I reached out to him and fellow appointee Dalton Glasscock. I asked for meeting information. I asked for a connection to the board. I looked for this information on my own as well. I was finally able to connect with the board scheduler in December. I believe that there was a miscommunication. She was sending email notices that were bouncing and didn't realize it. It was cleared up, no issue, and I am very happy to share all of these communications dated with each of you. In January, I became a member of the Kansas House of Representatives. I asked to be excused from the meeting in January and February. Normally, I would simply drive back up and forth, but like you, we were becoming increasingly aware that we would soon be dealing with issues we had absolutely no playbook for. I was in communication with the board coordinator, and she let me know meetings would be suspended until later that year. This board actually has not met in months. In the last few months, I've spent my days and nights connecting folks from across the state that could not get unemployment benefits because no one was answering the phone. I've spent hours on the phone, listening to heartbreaking stories, and I've connected some with mental health services. I've also working with a constituent whose adult son died when his DCF care workers could not connect her to behavioral health in time. My own family's been touched by suicide. I am keenly aware of the needs for mental health services in our community. I'm also a fierce advocate for mental health resources for Sedgwick County when I'm in Topeka. That's why I'm here to talk about this today, because this appointment is personally very important to me. In the last week, I've received calls from someone connected to Sedgwick County. I won't mention the organization or her name because it's not their fault. She told me she was asked to call me by county leadership to get my resignation before being removed. She told me I needed to accept Commissioner O'Donnell can do what he likes, and it would be best to resign instead of being attacked by Michael here today at this meeting. It would appear I'm no longer an ally for our community to Commissioner O'Donnell. I became an enemy to defeat in November. Now it's in his best interest to spin a false narrative to all of you about my dedication to our community. The problem is that Michael will bully and intimidate me whether I choose to resign or speak out, and that's the problem. This is a pattern of behavior that's actually detrimental to good public policy. If there isn't an ethics policy preventing these advisory boards to be used as political attacks, there sure needs to be one now. We need to work together in the spirit of true public service, as we've done before. As I responded last week on the phone, when no one speaks up and demands better from public officials, everyone in the community loses. And I do hope that you will stand up for me today, and you will stand up for what's right, and you'll help me retain this spot on the board. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Representative Jaeger. This is the first time that you've contacted me since I appointed you last year.
I've called your office.
But you've never called and asked me. When we appoint people to these positions, we expect them to show up. You haven't showed up. You are the only person, according to our record-
I will share the communications with everyone. I was not told about these meet-
You have not reached out to me.
Yes, well, I have communication with you that's dated.
I'm responding to your, you have no communication with me?
Yes, I do.
I request that you produce those.
I will.
But, but I'm just saying, you're the only person on the board that never showed up. You never reached out to me to ask when the meetings were. You knew you were appointed. Representative Jaeger, you could have called the Mental Health Advisory Board. You could have called somebody, our office, Carol and Lisa. When we appoint somebody, they send you information. They give you, they give you information at that point. But when I appoint people to these boards, I expect at some point in a year for them to attend one meeting at least. And our bylaws say if you miss a number of meetings in a row, you're ineffective anyway. So I'm just looking forward to appointing somebody that's going to be showing up for these meetings, and I'm not trying to make this political-
I mean, as I said, I knew this would be the narrative I'll share. I will share the communications.
Do I have the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Representative Jaeger, I, I'm sorry you felt the need to come and make this political, but, and attack me, but this isn't partisan. In fact, if anything, it would help me out more politically if I did appoint a Democrat to the board, because it would show more bipartisanship, which is what I was trying to do last year when I appointed you. But I've never heard from you for a whole year that you weren't getting any information. There has been no contact whatsoever. So anyway, I'm sorry you felt the need to come and do it in this meeting instead of just calling me sometime in the last week or two.
I did call your office, and I will share those communications. Thank you.
You never reached out to me or left a message.
Thank you.
Representative, there's one more question.
Representative Jaeger.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Can you please submit all of your communications to-
Yes, I will.
-our, for the record? And also, Mr. Papoon, what is the appropriate way to remove someone from a board in your, in your opinion, based on our ethics standards?
I don't know if our ethics standards get into this at all, Commissioner Cruz, and I can address some of this. And in fact, she referenced some county management people or somebody. I was the one that called the director of our Mental Health Department and asked her just to check with Ms. Jaeger to see if she would resign, because that's what we typically do for these kinds of boards. These appointments, on many of these boards, unlike the ones we'll have later with the Corrections Board, many of these appointments serve at your pleasure. You get so many appointments, they serve at your pleasure. Serving at your pleasure means you can dismiss them for any reason or no reason at all. You don't, you don't need an intent-
Dismiss them without informing them?
You can do, well, what will have to happen, Commissioner, is what we typically do is have, like we have coming up, resignations that come on the board. Even though each commissioner gets an appointment, the entire board appoints every, every board member that we have on all kinds of boards. What we didn't do in this case is we didn't, and that's why we reached out to Ms. Jaeger to get a resignation, because she didn't resign, then we needed to go through the action that we're going to do on Item F, which is remove her from the board and appoint Kathy Bond. But these appointments serve at your pleasure. I mean, these aren't board appointments, so if you don't want somebody on the board that you're comfortable with, you can remove these people. I mean, it's that simple. I don't know what else to say to Ms. Jaeger, but- don't know what else to say to Ms. Jaeger, but whether it's political, whether it's attendance, whether it's you don't like their hairstyle, if these people don't make you comfortable for being on the boards, you can remove these people.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that, Mr. Papoon. I, I appreciate your explanation. I just feel like that if we have an appointment, we, we make connections at the onslaught of these appointments to discuss with our appointees whether they want to be appointed. And if, if we want to remove them, I think it should be the same protocol. We, we contact them and mention it instead of making a post that someone sees secondhand. So that's, that's my, I feel like we have to do a better job.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, to dispute that false narrative, the county councilor's office put together a notice that Ms. Jaeger was going to be removed, listing the bylaws as to what would constitute a person's removal from a board and its multiple unexcused absences, and no contact with the board organizer or the county commissioner that appointed. I haven't spoken to Ms. Jaeger in a year, and I did not make that post before. I made that post after we had sent the letter. Ms. Jaeger might not have received it by that point, but it was definitely after. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jaeger.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, Item A, regular meeting minutes of July 1st, 2020.
Okay. Commissioners, you've received a copy of the minutes. Can we combine all three, A, B, and C? Consideration of the minutes of July 1st, 2nd, and 8th meeting. I make a motion, and if there's any questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of July 1st, 2nd, and 8th. There's been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, Item D, accept the resignation of Stephanie Kohlhoff from the Sedgwick County 4th District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, county councillor. We can take, actually take D and E together if it's the will of the commission. Both of these are resignation from, resignations from Commissioner Cruz's Citizens Advisory Board. The first resignation is Stephanie Kohlhoff, and the second resignation is Nigel Morton. You have their reasons in your backup, which are sufficient reasons to resign, and I'll allow Commissioner Cruz to address anything further on this.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mike Papoon. We, I, I am so pleased that Stephanie, for example, she is still attending our meetings. She moved out of our district, so she was no longer eligible. And Nigel had some other personal conflicts, but they both served and are continuing to serve on this board in some capacity. So I would make the motion to accept the resignation of Stephanie and Nigel Morton. I really appreciate their service, and I'm glad that they were able to serve when they did.
I'll second that. Been a motion and a second to accept-
Yeah, and I have one more thing. So just, I just want to point out that I do have three appointments, and we are discussing, as Commissioner Dennis did with his board appointments, to add a student position. So if you are interested in serving on the District 4 Citizens Advisory Board, there are three positions open. You can apply or contact me on our website. I'd be happy to consider your appointment to this board.
Okay. Again, there's been a motion and a second to accept the, the resignations of these two citizens. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, resolution appointing Kathy Bond to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Mike Papoon, county councillor. We've already discussed this item a few minutes ago. This is a resolution appointing Kathy Bond. This is one of Commissioner O'Donnell's three appointments to the Mental Health Advisory Board. This board advises this commission on mental health issues. It's an important board for the, for the county. This resolution also, because of what we discussed earlier, removes Stephanie Jaeger from said board. And again, just to reiterate, even though you have individual board appointments, we'd like the entire commission to remove people that, that don't want to be voluntarily removed from a board. But anyway, resolution's in proper form, and ask you to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the appointment of Kathy Bond to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board, and I would just like to publicly thank Kathy. She's a great advocate for mental health and just an all-around wonderful lady, and I'm excited to have her serve the citizens of Sedgwick County.
Okay. I'll second that. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am, I'm a little bit uncomfortable voting for this at this time because of what we just heard a few minutes ago. I don't think we have clarity as to how many meetings Ms. Jaeger actually attended. I would like to have that information.
Mr. Papoon can tell you how many meetings she attended. He has the record.
Do you have that, Mr. Papoon?
Well, I mean, she, she hasn't attended any meetings since her appointment, but what Ms. Jaeger will tell you is that she wasn't contacted early on. There may have been some miscommunication between either your staff and, and mental health staff on the correct address and some of that. So she missed some early on meetings because she claimed she didn't get the appropriate notification. And then, as she explained when she was at the podium, when, once she became, became a member of the legislature, she asked me issues then about attending meetings. So, and then COVID hit, and they haven't been having meetings for the last few months.
So of the meetings that she potentially would have been able to attend, how many meetings, and I think legislative, legislative duties there are, are certainly a legitimate reason not to be at a board meeting, seeing that that's in Topeka. That's reasonable. I think we, we make, we make concessions for members all the time for things similar to that. In fact, there's an appointment coming up here, I think, here in just a moment. We will probably see happen that had a very similar discussion going on a couple weeks ago. But I guess I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable at this point in supporting this. I always, I always say this, Kathy Bond is a dear friend. I have the highest regard for her. I think she's a wonderful person. I have no doubt that she would do a tremendous job. So there's nothing about her. I just don't feel comfortable removing people from a board if I don't have the details as to why. You know, we started this a couple years ago when we took, it was a, there was an issue where, in all the years I've been here, this is my sixth year, this started a couple, this started last year when we took a member off of MAPC. They serve a four-year term, and rather than just waiting to, for that term to end, they were removed. There was a request for a resignation. They complied. But I heard, I've heard from people that, you know, that person did a very good job on that committee. They raised unique issues, and I was, I was disappointed that we, we would shorten someone's term because of different people taking these seats and up here on this board. And so I think it's a slippery slope, and I, I would rather see people once they're appointed, let them finish their term, if possible. And I think we should have worked through that issue. It sounds like Ms. Jaeger actually had some reasonable issues of communication that I, I guess I trust what she said. So I would rather us work through that and give her a chance to do, do that position. And that sounds like that was, that was the reason why it didn't happen. She wants to serve, obviously. So I don't, I don't feel comfortable supporting this, this motion today, and I would rather see us give it some time and get the meetings back started again, give her a chance to, give her a chance to perform. Second of all, there's a, there's a fundamental difference between the idea when you appoint somebody, are they serving in their own capacity as an independent person that has their own thoughts and opinions and ideas, or are they serving at the pleasure, are they serving to represent, if you will, the commissioner? And I think that the former explanation is what we typically go by here. In other words, I don't ask people to take my ideas, represent my ideas at these boards. I trust them to do that on their own. And so if someone is appointed and they are doing the very best job they can, they're not representing, if you will, the commissioner's comments and ideas. They're representing their own comments and ideas. And to that extent, once we appoint somebody, our chance to vet them was before we appointed them. And I have no doubt that if someone says I can attend these meetings, that's one of the things we should be asking them before we make the appointment. And if things aren't working out, we should find out why. And so I, I'm, I'm not going to support the motion today. I think it's time, this is a slippery slope. I don't like what we've done in the past. I think we should not continue this type of swap outs on these boards in the future.
Commissioners, if I could address one point, is in the resolution that I drafted, I did not have her being removed for lack of attendance. Attendance-
I understand. I'm reading the resolution right now.
It, it, it has to do with the fact that it's Commissioner O'Donnell's appointment, and the board has the, the authority to remove somebody because these people serve at your pleasure. And, and if, this commission can always adopt resolutions that establish set terms and have criteria for removal, if they don't want appointments to be removed at the pleasure of the board. This particular board, though, it'd probably take a charter resolution because the statute specifically says these board members serve at the pleasure of this board, so.
And I, and I appreciate your, your explanation. And again, although we have the authority to do that, I don't, we, it's been our practice not to do that. We sign someone, we, we appoint someone to the board through a board vote, and we trust them to do their job and, and to make their, and represent, if you will, their perspective on those boards, and they almost always do a great job. And these boards are diverse for a reason. We, we entrust them to do the very best they possibly can in their own, in their own abilities, their own opinions, their own ideas. We don't control them, or at least I don't think we should be. And so although we have the authority to do this, I don't think we ought to do this. I think it's a slippery slope. And I just, again, it's not because I don't adore Kathy Bond. She's a wonderful person. I just don't like where this is going. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. This has to do with attendance. And as Commissioner Howell just said, we expect people to go to meetings. We expect that. And at some point in over a year, you would think that your representative would show up to a meeting or at least contact their county commissioner to say, hey, are there meetings going on? Contact the Mental Health Advisory Board. Sounds like there's excuse after excuse after excuse. But even with her being up in the legislature, it would be nice to have somebody that would be able to make all the meetings and pay attention to what is going on in those meetings, or at least even 50% of them. So to me, this shouldn't even be a big deal. We should want somebody that's going to show up and, and take the, take the effort to attend those meetings. And if it was your appointee, Commissioner Howell, I'm sure you would want that person showing up as well at some point in an entire year. And they're still having Zoom meetings. They, they've made it very easy and accessible for anybody to attend via phone. So that, to me, is the frustrating part, and it's become political where it doesn't need to be political. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, we all know this is not about attendance. I have to wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Howell. I think that there is a lot of things in this appointment that just don't fit our ethical standards. And I do believe that we should be acting, you know, we have principle six, a county commissioner should neither seek nor accept any favor from any source which may be offered to influence, excuse me, that's not the right one. Principle one, a county commissioner should be vigorously dedicated to the democratic ideals of honesty, openness, and accountability in all public matters, including county government. How, how honest and open was this appointment change? So I have to agree with Commissioner Howell that I think that we need some backup. And, and this has nothing to do with Ms. Kathy Bond. I actually don't know her. This has nothing to do with her. But I believe that we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing all the time. And this appointment and this resignation is not happening the way it should. So I will not be supporting this motion today.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I would just like to say, we, we changed our entire nominating process to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission to support Commissioner Cruz removing her appointee. And I was supportive of that because I believe that individual commissioners should be able to appoint the people they want to to any committee, whether it's the MAPC, Mental Health Advisory Board. That, that is something that I believe that each commissioner should be able to appoint people they are comfortable with. And I'm sorry that that move on my part isn't being reciprocated by Commissioner Cruz, but we had to change entire nominating statutes between the city and the county on a joint board to remove one person per Commissioner Cruz. And that's just the truth. So thank you.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. The motion passes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, a resolution appointing LaShonda Garns to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board.
Commissioner, or, Mike Papoon.
Thank you for the promotion.
You're a commissioner now.
Mike Papoon, county councillor. We can take Items G, H, and I together. As has been referenced in the last discussion, these are commission appointments at, at large. And due to the actions of the board last fall in adopting a new policy, I think it was adopted on October 16th of last year, we now have a process and procedure for addressing at-large appointments for the board. And part of that process was having, in this, in this particular case, the department head come forward and make her recommendations for members to the board. And this was, this was done at a staff meeting, I believe, about three, two weeks ago or three weeks ago yesterday. The recommendations that were made for this board is LaShonda Garns, Tashima, Owens Council, and, and since then, I believe that she has recommended Karen Countryman-Rosworm to this board. We have prepared resolutions appointing all three of these members to the board. The resolutions are in proper form. I think county manager may want to address Item I as relating to that appointment. And that's all I have to say for now.
Okay. I agree that we try to consider all three together, but Tom Stoltz?
Thank you, Chairman. Tom Stoltz, county manager. As Mike alluded to, the, the commission last fall adopted Policy 1.105, which dealt with at-large advisory board appointments. The, the purpose and spirit of that policy change was to be more open and transparent in board appointments. It was to get more applicants to, to consider perhaps sitting on a board and to get different kinds of people to, to volunteer for these types of board. One of the components of that process was a public discussion in a staff meeting so that commissioners could publicly discuss and vet applicants and the positive attributes that these applicants bring for consideration. The Team Justice Board appointments, all of these Items G, H, and I fall under this category. Over the, over the summer, Corrections has had three appointments to make for Team Justice. Our corrections director received many applications for the board, all outstanding people, so the policy was working. We're getting, we had, she had 10 applicants, all qualified, good people. In the staff meeting that Mike talked about on July 28th, the corrections director led a conversation concerning applicants for one of these positions. One of our incumbent board members, who is now actually the chair of the Team Justice Board, Dr. Karen Countryman-Rosworm, was discussed. And the tone of that discussion took an unfortunate turn in regard to board attendance, which I want to apologize for today to her. I have known Dr. Countryman-Rosworm for over a decade. She is an associate professor in the School of Social Work at Wichita State University. She is the founder and executive director of the Center for Combating Human Trafficking, which she founded also at the university. She has produced more publications than I can read, 20 publications, and she's internationally known for her expertise on human trafficking. She has academic credentials, which are too exhaustive for me to discuss here today. What is important to me about Karen is her personal story. She grew up in, through, as a child, through the child welfare and foster care system. Her real life experience is dealing with criminal and judicial systems. And not only did she survive it, but she is self-improving now to the level that she, that is beyond impressive. Based on these experiences from her childhood, she made it her life's passion to really analyze, understand, and do her best to make a better system that we all know has challenges today. And she's at the forefront of trying to make positive change in that. In her tenure, she has served as a street outreach worker, a program coordinator, a therapist, a human rights advocate, and other roles which are as grassroots as one can achieve. Though she has attained her formal education and has taken on her professorship at the university, she still is grassroots-oriented. I recently spoke to her, talked to her last week, and apologized to her in person, and I wanted to do this publicly today. And I talked with her about her appointment on the, on the, on the board. I am convinced she is committed to this board. I am convinced she is committed as the chairwoman of this board. And it probably has more qualifications than any other, than any other board member sitting on Team Justice. I've also talked to correction staff- I've also talked to corrections staff, and all staff, including Glenda Martins, are sorry for any misunderstanding from the staff meeting on July 28th. After discussion, all agree that Dr. Countryman-Rosworm should remain on this board as her precious time allows. And I would ask that the Board of Commissioners today please ratify that appointment.
Okay. Thanks, Tom, for your comments. Appreciate it very much. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to, I'll be making that motion, but first, I just want to say that LaShonda Garns is an incredible person in our community. I am just very glad to be getting to know her over the past year and a half. She is a hard worker. She is absolutely on point at every meeting. I know if I have a question I can ask her and she'll know. Tamisha Owens, I do not know her, but Marquita Atkins is a very influential person in our youth, in our community, and she speaks very, very highly of her. And I just want to give a little shout out to Marquita Atkins real fast because she has been encouraging young people to get involved in these boards, to get experience, to understand how things work. And I think that we need fresh faces and the youth of our community to start stepping up to the plate, which they are. So, Marquita, great job to you for getting folks to get on board. And Karen, I just, I reached out to her as well. You know, when we first discussed this, I was a little taken aback at how it all went down in our meeting. And I know that Glenda had reached out to Karen to apologize afterwards and how things happened. I heavily support Glenda Martins. I think that she is an incredible advocate and an incredibly hard worker for the county and for our community. And so I absolutely respect Glenda Martins. I respect Karen. I'm excited that this appointment is going to happen today for all three of these ladies and would be happy to make the motion to appoint LaShonda, Tamisha, and Karen to the Team Justice Board.
I'll second that. Been a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Thank you, Tom, and Commissioner Cruz, for your comments. I'm sure we all echo most of them as well. But with that said, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item J, consideration of grant in the amount of $370,543 for the 2020 Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant 2020 Public Safety Modernization Program.
We have a presenter. Anisa Redd?
Good morning, Commissioners. Anisa Redd.
I was looking.
Good morning, Commissioners. Anisa Redd, Management Intern at the County Manager's Office. I am here today to present to you the 2020 Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as the JAG grant. The JAG grant is the primary provider of the federal criminal justice funding for the states and units of local government. The total amount of funding available for the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County is a total of $370,543, which both jurisdictions have decided to split 50/50. Excuse me. Sedgwick County's share is $185,272. The difference from last year is a $17,477 decrease of total funds, of which $8,739 would be county funds. Today, in addition to accepting staff's recommendation to accept this grant, we also ask that you conduct a public hearing to accept public comments as required by the grant and the United States Department of Justice. This slide outlines the requested amounts from the departments and what the advisory board recommended. The total funds requested for 2020 is $216,142.33. For reference, the request for 2019 was $277,359.59. For the 2020 recommended items, the committee decided to fully fund priority one requests for all departments and either a full or partial funding for priority two requests. The remaining information will cover what the specific items are funded through the grant, through the grant, excuse me. On this slide and the others to follow, the number in the parentheses represents the number of units recommended by the committee, as well as the purpose for each request, followed by the price per unit. At the total request for the department, at the bottom, you will notice the total request for the department. The sheriff's office has one priority this year, and that is in regards to property and evidence storage. The purpose of this funding is to purchase an additional lateral shelving unit to meet demands of evidence and storage unit. The sheriff's request is a total of $70,500, which is 38% of the total JAG allocated to The next department we have is the Regional Forensic Science Center. The Regional Forensic Science Center has one priority this year, and that is to upgrade the Analytical Balance Machine for law enforcement. The Regional Forensic Science Center conducts testing over 1,900 submissions annually for the presence of controlled substances. The laboratory wishes to replace an aging balance that is over 20 years old to better equip the evidence submission area. Furthermore, chemists are manually transferring sample weights from the balances to case file worksheets. To eliminate the possibility of a transcription error, the Regional Forensic Science Center would like to enhance the balances with dot matrix thermal printers so that the mass values can be technically reviewed. This request comes to a total of $16,625, which is 9% of the total JAG allocated to Sedgwick County. The District Attorney's Office, first priority of funding is to request Justware, which is the case management system used by the District Attorney's Office. This request is to expand the Justware San capacity and the application and the database by 42 terabyte to accommodate past and future growth of electronic files related to cases being prosecuted by the DA's office. The second priority for the District Attorney's Office is to request funding for discovery supplies. The format of evidence has transitioned primarily to electronic format, and the size of digital evidence has grown exponentially in the last few years. The district attorney must provide copies of all exculpatory evidence to defense counsel. To do so requires a large amount of thumb drives, CDs, DVDs, and Blu-ray discs. The two requests come to a total of $21,582.24, which is 12% of the total JAG allocated to Sedgwick County. This year, Corrections' priority one funding is to help purchase drug testing and electronic monitoring services for adult offenders supervised in the community. Moderate-to-high-risk offenders who have demonstrated the need for increased monitoring and/or those who are court-ordered will be replaced on electronic monitoring. The second priority for Corrections is to address equipment needs to support the Corrections' management system. Funding for equipment will allow the department to track client information across system processes and provide the ability to run reports. The two requests come to a total of $71,827, which is 39% of the total JAG allocated to Sedgwick County. The courthouse police has one priority this year, and that is to be able to provide taser protective devices for courthouse police officers. While the courthouse police department has 34 positions, there are only 12 taser units, and the department frequently runs into problems equipping all officers who need to carry a taser. The courthouse police department is responsible for the safety and security operations for the courthouses. This one request totals to $4,737.76, which is 3% of the total JAG allocated to Sedgwick At this time, it is staff's recommendation that you open the public hearing, accept the public comments, and close the public hearing in addition to approving the grant application and related agreement with the city of Wichita.
Okay. Thank you, Anisa.
Also, also authorize the chairman to submit the application through Justice Department Grants Management System, execute all grant documents as required, including a grant/award agreement containing substantially the same terms and conditions as the application, and lastly, approve the establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term and allowing the remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I believe a representative for each department is here or on the phone to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Anisa. Very, very nice. Commissioner Cruz?
Do we need to open public comment first, or?
We can. Or you want to comment?
Well, I just wanted to say, last year, I sat in on this meeting, and it was, it got kind of heated. So I hope it was a little better this year.
Yeah, well.
It was? Good, good. I know that everybody was fighting for their dollars. Rightfully so, because we do a lot of things here in Sedgwick County that need to be funded to keep people safe and happy and well. So I just want to, I hope that it went well. And I thank you for this presentation today. It's very informative.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, I served, I represented the commission on it this year, and I was impressed with the cooperation, and it went fairly smooth, and it really, it was said for an hour and a half, and I think it went 20 minutes, so.
Yes, absolutely.
It was really, it was really good. So thank you. Maybe it's your leadership, Anisa, is why it happened so well.
Thank you.
Anyway, at this time, we can open it up if anybody from the public want to comment on this item. And I don't see anybody in the audience, and I don't think we had any emails, so we will close the public comment and bring it back to the bench. Is any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, since this is a memorial grant, I just think it's fitting to mention who Edward J. Byrne actually is. He's a police officer who was killed on line of, killed on duty trying to protect an immigrant witness who agreed to testify against a drug dealer in New York City in 1988. And it's a pretty well-known case, and as a consequence, this memorial is put out to remember him and the police officers that are killed on line of duty. I just wanted to make that point clear. As we accept these funds and see them do good things in our community, we ought to at least reflect on the fact that this is, I guess, the initiation of what happened that caused this to happen. So thanks all my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Howell, thank you for reminding us and pointing that out. That's good information. Okay. I don't see any other comments. Has there been a motion? I'll make the motion to accept as presented, the grant?
Second.
Motion and a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again for everybody that was participating. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, COVID-19 update.
Mr. Stoltz?
Good morning, again, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager. We'll go through three things today on the COVID update, since we didn't have a chance since there was no staff yesterday. We'll go over the dashboard very quickly. We've taken the recovery graphics away, which I think we covered pretty thoroughly yesterday, and we did put out an explanation to the public and to the media on why that happened. Tim will talk a little bit about testing, the updates that we have, and then Dr. Menz has issued a new order, so Justin will frame that for you, and Dr. Menz is here to talk about the specifics. So with that, if we look at the dashboard, our numbers are similar to the last few days. We seem to be hovering right around 10% for the infection rate. Mark, we've had some steady decline, but it's leveled off somewhat. Next slide, please, Kate. Our hospital numbers on the next slide, again, very similar to last week, a little bit of a one-person decline. But the hospitals, we had our discussion with them on Monday. They're operating okay and hoping that these numbers decrease a bit, but staying the same this week and the next. Kate, this is just our graph showing by zip code the testing, our PPEs and our equipment numbers. Next, this is a graph that has changed. This used to have the recovery graph writing run under it, but right now, it just represents positive cases and kind of the pace that they move. And illness onset chart. So, and then some demographic chart and other types of items still on there yet today. So the major change for this week was the removal of the recovery numbers. We've talked about this for a couple of weeks at staff meetings now with commissioners, and just for a myriad of reasons, just was time to take that off. So, but overall, the numbers are stable, appear to be stable with some slight decline. And Adrian is here, she wants further comment on that. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to Mr. Kaufman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did send an email to you, Manager Stoltz, and to Director Byrne right before the meeting today regarding, I guess my opinion, taking down the actives and recoveries from the dashboard. I understand that the data wasn't as accurate as we would like it, and that's probably a reasonable justification to take that off there. But the actives, of course, is a calculation based on what we know about recoveries. And recoveries is based on a conversation that happens between a health department employee and the case that's in the community. They have to make that phone call, and they have a discussion about their case and how they're recovering. And if it's determined that they are recovered, then they move them from the active column to the recovery column. And of course, that's a very, I guess, a time-consuming process. And so that's why the recoveries continue to, I guess, lag maybe what is reality in the community. And as a consequence, the actives also were, I think, significantly off. In fact, by my calculations, probably about 65%, maybe even more than that, 65% off because of that lag. As I continue thinking about this, I would just like to throw out there as a, I guess, my personal opinion is that what I'm really interested in, it's not that I'm interested in those actives and recoveries, I certainly am, but I think even more than that, I'm interested in what is the infectious rate of Sedgwick County? How many people are actually infectious? And to me, that's something we're not really tracking. And I guess I would, I happen to notice that on the CDC website, they have a study that they put out three days ago that talks about infectious rates for, they say very clearly, persons with mild or moderate symptoms remain infectious no longer than 10 days. And people who have severe to critical illnesses or severe immune compromise likely remain infectious no longer than 20 days after symptom onset. And so using those numbers, we can calculate basically the number of positive cases that we can add them together over a period of, let's say, 14 days, and we can have some sense of what's the infection rate of Sedgwick County. I think that's similar to the actives case, the actives number we saw before, but this is based on slightly different criteria. And I guess I made that case at our last meeting, and I'll make it again. I think for us to make policy in Sedgwick County, we have to have not just information about deaths and total number of cases. That's not, it's not as useful as something that seems to be maybe dynamically measuring what's going on in Sedgwick County. And I think the infectious rate is reasonable. And the reason that matters is because someone who actually has COVID-19, they may not fully recover ever. They might actually succumb to the virus and actually pass away. They might have lingering consequences from being sick that may last weeks or months into the future. And as a, because that's true, we can't consider them to be recovered until they're as recovered as they possibly can be. And at some point, maybe they'll be moved over from the actives to the recovery column. To me, that's a way to track this that I think is too time-consuming and too complicated. I think based on what the CDC is saying here, based on the calendar, we ought to be able to track, if you will, an infectious rate of Sedgwick County. An infectious rate simply says, here's how many people have, we've tested positive for COVID-19 in the last 14 days. The sum of that is, and there's a number, and that number will trend up or trend down based on what's going on in Sedgwick County. So I think we need something on the dashboard. I understand the actives and recoveries is maybe not the right, maybe not the right thing to have on there. on there, but I think something about infectious rates, based on what the CDC's put out three days ago, I think would be reasonable. And I think we need to have something up there. So, Mr. Manager, I would ask you once again to, to go back and visit this again and, and get something up there.
Commissioner, we'll look at that. I'll talk with Adrienne about it, and we'll have staff take a look. We'll just, CDC also says with infectious rate that, and we talked about this at staff meeting before, too, anytime you rely on government reporting, these are the people that talk to us, these are the people that go in for the test. Doctors will tell you that the infectious rate out there, that's still going to be even a, a best guess or an estimate. It's not going to be the exact number. In this exercise, working through data on the pandemic, it's, anytime you're dealing with people, you know, we're not, we're not dealing with widgets or machinery, we're dealing with human beings, that information is partial. Some people get sick, they never go to the doctor, they never get a test. So that, we can look at that, but there'll always be a qualifier on it that this is those that have reported to government, but we'll, we'll look at your infectious rate idea.
And I appreciate those comments. I just think we need something to drive policy. We need something to know whether this is getting better or worse in Sedgwick County. And we need a trend line that's based on something. And right now, all we have is a number that increases and can never go down. Deaths will only go, only go up. They can't go down. Total number of cases can only go up. So that, that alone is not telling us, you know, what type of policy we should have in Sedgwick County, whether or not it's time to allow a mask order to go away, or we should, you know, extend that because of what's going on in Sedgwick County. We need a trend line, and the trend line needs to be based on, on something that we can measure reasonably. I understand there's probably more cases out there that never, that never report back to Sedgwick County. I understand that, but that's always going, that's always going to happen. So it's only as good as our system. I get that. There's going to be some natural error that's going to happen, but generally speaking, this is a pretty good way to measure what's happening in Sedgwick County.
I, I bring your attention to the first slide, too, Commissioner. This is the, close to a trend line as we get on the, on the, on the dashboard.
The problem with the number of positives is that we're only testing people with symptoms now.
Correct.
If we were testing the general population, I get, our numbers are positive, our positive rates would obviously decline. We're only testing people who likely have COVID-19, that positive rate's going to be much higher. And this, this chart by itself is not telling me what I need to know as a policymaker.
Okay.
Commissioner Cruz?
I'm sorry?
Oh, Dr. Menz?
Yeah.
Good morning, Dr. Menz.
Yeah, Garret Menz. County Health Officer for Sedgwick County. I agree with you. I'm frustrated that our markers and our metrics for this disease are very difficult, and none of them are as precise as I would like. The other piece, though, is we are not testing the asymptomatic, and they're not coming to the drive-throughs. And that has been the big bugaboo across the nation, is how big is that asymptomatic population, and how infectious are they? And we don't know yet. And it's very difficult to get a handle on that, because asymptomatic people don't go to drive-throughs. So I wish we had better numbers, but we're doing the best we can with what we got. We, at least the CDC is recommending that you look at the percent positive on your drive-throughs as one metric that gives you some indication, not perfect, not perfect at all. But I will just tell you in a minute what that number is for our county.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, this past week, I have been in contact with Dr. Chloe Steinhauer, and she is a pulmonologist, and she's also a critical care medicine specialist. And I just wanted to read, she gives a weekly update on her Facebook page in addition to some graphs and charts. And I, I'm just going to read what she, what she posted, because she puts it in a very real-world way. So if you'll allow me to read this, she says, "This week's COVID recap is a little delayed and long. It was a long and hard week, and we needed some time to decompress and process. Since Wichita and Sedgwick County enacted mask mandates, 7:03 for Wichita, 7:10 for Sedgwick County, and placed restrictions on gatherings and businesses, we have seen a small but steady decline in overall cases. It takes two to four weeks after changes in case numbers to see a change in hospitalizations. That means local hospitals are continuing to see increasing patients requiring hospitalizations. Our hospital patients are now mostly local as compared to shipped in from outlying areas. They remain often critically ill and have a very long hospital stay. Nearly 2/3 of our patients are currently in the ICU. Of our ICU patients, over 60% are on a ventilator. The remaining patients require exceptional amount of oxygen or ventilator to mask support. Our patients are being asked to lay prone, tummy time, on their own to improve their oxygenation. Those who require the ventilator are being turned prone by our care team. Shout out to our amazing nurses and respiratory therapists. As you can imagine, these are the sickest patients in our hospital and are the most labor-intensive. In addition to the increased cases in our hospital, we are now seeing patients come back with complications from COVID. We see patients coming in with heart failure, heart rhythm abnormalities, blood clot, secondary infections, strokes, and scarring, fibrosis of the lungs. COVID is starting to show that it has long-lasting effects which can change a patient's quality of life, even if they only have mild disease initially. We are also seeing patients present with atypical or varied presentations. In addition to the typical respiratory and viral illness symptoms with fever, shortness of breath, and cough, we have patients presenting with stroke-like symptoms, seizure, acute mental status changes, blood clots, GI symptoms, and skin symptoms. Sometimes, they have an isolated non-respiratory symptom, which complicates the diagnosis. Our numbers continue to tell an interesting story. Our county and metro cases continue to climb, but our rate has slowly, slightly, slowed slightly. Despite this, both the state and county, both as a state and as a county, we have yet to reach the threshold of less than 10% positive testing. Unfortunately, at numbers above 10%, we are unable to adequately test and trace to do that. New clusters in both Sedgwick County and the surrounding county are causing increased burden on our local healthcare systems. That uncontrolled growth has secondary effects. Staff in the hospital have to assume that every person we come in contact with could be infected. This means that universal masking and face protection are required. Now, every healthcare worker wears face shields or sealing goggles in addition to their masks. On top of that, every patient who has an aerosol procedure or treatment, almost every patient on our service, healthcare staff must wear an N95 respirator mask. That is a lot of gear, and she posts a picture of what she looks like, to be careful to avoid contamination. So what does all of this matter? This matters because we are three weeks from the Labor Day holiday and from sending our kids back to school. With the evolving data and knowledge of this virus, we know that children can both contract and spread this disease even at younger ages. Our children deserve the chance to be in school, and we, as a community, need to work to provide that opportunity in a safe manner. Here's what we need to do, she suggests. Stay home, avoid, avoid large gatherings, indoor gatherings, or businesses that don't mandate mandatory masking. Be aggressive with hand hygiene and sanitation. Wear a mask. Natural experiment data has shown in multiple cities, states, and countries that universal community masking can bring virus rates down and allow for full operating of businesses and schools. Don't touch your face, which is really hard for me to do, and protect your eyes to avoid transmission. Listen to your doctors and scientists. Recognize that there are no cures for or infallible treatments for this disease. The best thing you can do is avoid it. Skip the Labor Day celebrations and trips, they'll be there next year. Help us keep our kids in school by limiting the spread. Finally, be kind to your hospital staff. They are working in unprecedented conditions. They are busting their butt every day to keep these people alive and to get them back to their families. Additionally, they are risking their own health and their family's health to do this. We are beyond grateful to be a part of such an amazing team. Every person taking care of these patients deserves a little bit of extra kindness and support." I read this because I think it's important to hear directly from the people caring for our, our community, and it's, it's vital that we understand that we can prevent this. I was listening to the World Health Organization the other day. We have brains, the virus does not. And it's important for us to utilize every tool in our toolbox to make sure that we don't infect others if we happen to be carrying this unknowingly. So I appreciate the conversation that we have continually each week. I thank you, Adrienne and Dr. Menz, for your continued support, your continued information. This is, this is truly an unprecedented time, and we have to be kind and fight the virus and not each other. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Tom, where did, next?
Tim, update on the testing?
Morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, county manager. I'll give you a brief update on our testing activities. Health Department tested 1,002 individuals last week through a combination of the containment unit, the mobile outreach unit, and the drive-through testing site. At that drive-through testing site, we do test folks who are symptomatic that have called 211 and asked to schedule a time. I would encourage the community to continue to do that. It seems like our numbers have dropped just a little bit in terms of folks that are presenting at the drive-through testing site. If there were concerns about being scheduled promptly, those concerns should be gone right now. If someone calls before 4 o'clock today, they'll be scheduled for a time tomorrow. And the other thing that's going on that I think is a real positive is that last week, we started with our results portal, and so we've had 560 results come back that we've entered. We've got five staff that are entering those results, and we've got results in the portal that we received on the 18th. So we're getting information in there very quickly, and we had, so far, we've had 58% of the results that have been entered have been picked up by the individual that was sampled. So that's a real good sign. And then we've got staff that are notifying those that haven't picked those up yet. So we're very current on getting results out. Could be somewhere between three, three and five days to get those results back. So I'd like to encourage the community to call 211 if they're feeling any of those symptoms so that we can get them scheduled. And I also like to remind everyone that we are sampling a small specialized set of asymptomatic individuals, people that work in high-risk categories. So they may be first responders, they may be nursing home employees, they may work in a group home, things like that. So we're sampling a mix of both individuals who have symptoms and those that are asymptomatic. The other update I'd like to mention is that we've got our mobile site going to both Haysville and Clearwater on the 20th and the 24th. We've got two different mobile sites scheduled in the city of Wichita, the 26th and the 31st. All that information is posted on our website. We've got some dates scheduled out even into September. So we continue to make that mobile clinic, or that mobile sampling site available as well. And lastly, I'd like to provide a little bit of information about the Clinical Research Lab in Lenexa. We've had initial contact with them. We're going to work through the contacting, contracting process so that we can fix the, the process where we'll pay them for the work that they do. We've got staff that are planning right now how we're going to make the transition from the sampling that we're doing to the saliva-based sampling, and we should have that up and running in fairly short order, probably within the next three weeks. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. That's, that's positive steps. And good news. We got a few questions. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. This week on our hospital call, we had, you know, depending on what happens with schools, how can we get teachers added to the list of priority people to... Sorry, excuse me, my microphone wasn't on. I asked on our hospital call this week about teachers. I had a, a couple of teachers reach out to me and to see if they could get added to the list of priority folks to be tested. Can you address that?
We're monitoring those numbers, and I think we're probably going to be able to open that up to them fairly soon. We want to have a couple more days of data before we do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to clarify, did you say the, the Lenexa testing will not be available for three weeks? Is that what you just said?
I don't have an exact date for the start. We've got, we're, two different things that we have to work through. One is the payment process, and the other is the actual sampling process on our site, and we've got staff working on both right now. And as soon as we've got a firm date, we'll let you know.
I understand, I understand that WSU did get their EUA for their saliva test. I, I heard that from somewhere. I don't know where I heard that from, but do we have an expected date when we think that that might be coming, coming online?
I'm going to let Tom go.
I was on a COVID Task Force update Zoom meeting yesterday, and Andy Schlapp was on and is now indicating they could go as early as early October. When Dr. Tomlin was here last week, he, he started off with November, then his staff was hoping for mid-October, and Andy said yesterday during the call, early October potentially. So they're, they're working as fast as they can.
Well, I do, I do think this is a, saliva testing is a, is obviously a game changer for this community. We've got to get that started. But it's my, it's my assumption, I guess, that if we do start saliva testing, that we will open this up to asymptomatic people. And I guess there's, Commissioner Cruz mentioned teachers, that there's, there's folks in certain occupations, I think, that obviously need to, need to have access to that testing. But are we going to open this up to others in the community?
That's the intent. That's, as soon as we're ready, we want to make sure that we don't overwhelm. The last time we opened sampling up to all comers, any asymptomatic, we overwhelmed the system in terms of positives that we needed to contact. We've got to make sure that we're, as we're adding disease investigators every week, we've added a number this week, we've got a number that starts next week. Got to make sure they have adequate number of disease investigators before we overwhelm the system. But that is our intent.
Thank you. I, I have a question from a constituent that contacted me. Want to just verify, the saliva testing still being a PCR test, I assume that the positives and negatives will be added to our dashboard. Regardless of the test method, as long as it's a PCR test, it'll be added to those, to those, to the data that's on the dashboard, dashboard? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, again, for the update.
And then the final thing under the, under the COVID update, Chairman, is Dr. Menz's order. And I'd like to, I guess, ask Justin Wagner to get up and just frame this. He had some communications with Dr. Menz, and Dr. Menz, of course, is here and can answer what he's thinking and, and the rationale behind his latest order.
Morning, Justin.
Morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Yesterday, Dr. Menz, Sedgwick County Local Health Officer, approved a new order regarding COVID-19. Generally speaking, this order still requires the wearing of masks and face coverings in public spaces, continues to cap mass gatherings at 15 people, and has provisions that are specific to bars, nightclubs, and other businesses licensed for on-premises consumption of alcohol. I'd like to quickly summarize the two key changes in Dr. Menz's order. First of all, you've got a copy of the order in front of you, I believe, on the top of Page 4, Section 1.3A has been amended. The, the county's current childhood exemption from wearing masks exempts children ages 11 and under. That's been amended in Dr. Menz's new order and would modify this to be an exemption from wearing masks for children age 5 and under. So that's the first key change. The second one is on Pages 5 and 6. It spans a little bit, the, the bottom of Page 5 and the top of Page 6. Section 2.5 has been modified. It now establishes that bars, nightclubs, and other businesses licensed for the on-premises consumption of alcohol are required to close by 11:00 PM and limit their occupancy to 50% of what the fire code permits. These businesses may remain open past 11:00 PM solely for curbside and carryout services. And the order, Dr. Menz's order would become effective at 12:01 AM on Saturday, August 22nd, and it would end at 11:59 PM on Tuesday, September 8th. Pursuant to the provisions that the Kansas Legislature enacted during its special session, the Board of County Commissioners does have the option to review, amend, or revoke this order. So that's certainly something you could take up today if that's the will of the board. I'd be happy to stand for any questions. And as Tom mentioned, Dr. Menz is here for any questions you have that may require his medical expertise. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Dr. Menz, I do have a real quick question I received from a constituent about licensed daycare facilities. Could you address that? The question?
Those are not exempt in the current order.
Okay. So, so please elaborate on that a little bit. So if we have a licensed daycare facility that has, for any reason at all, a six-year-old, but with, with the rest of the kids who are under six, right, so five and under have to wear a mask, you have a child who's six, they would have to wear a mask. So how, can you please just talk about that? Because I think there's some confusion, and we want to eliminate that.
Well, I would say there's confusion, but...
Well, I would say there's confusion, but also there's uncertainty. We don't know for sure yet about children and how transmissible they are. We certainly know that they don't get as sick as the adults. Some of them get sick, but at a much lower rate than adults do. But we're still, an open question is, how well do they transmit it? And so there is no hard evidence of what age that should be, but the current standard tends to be around age five or six to start suggesting that we're asking kids to wear a mask. Now, with more data and information, more study, we may have to modify that in the future.
Okay. So to the woman's point earlier today, I mean, I, I think those of us with small kids understand that wearing a mask is difficult as far as hygiene, those kinds of things. So what, would you have any recommendations about how to, well, I, I just, I think it's, it's hard. This is a hard thing for everybody, and, and what we're trying to do is take precautions.
Yes.
And so I-
So at this point, our main concern is about children transmitting it to adults and other children. We still don't know how effective transmitters they are. We know adults are pretty effective transmitters, but, so I apologize, but we're working in an information deficit. We just still are learning more about this virus and individuals, and we don't even understand yet why children seem to be somewhat, not completely, but somewhat immune to the effects of this illness.
Thank you.
Lot of mysteries.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I see some, some things I like about this order and some things I don't like about the order, so I don't know how to follow on this deal. But the issue of, of bringing the DE type of license back to being able to open up is, I think, an improvement. And so, but let's be clear, the, the DER, which has been allowed to open till midnight, is now going to be having to close about 11 o'clock, so it's an hour shorter. And are they also held to the 50%, the 50% occupancy? I think that's what this says. Is that, is that correct?
Again, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Howell, that's correct. Any, any businesses that are bars, nightclubs, or that are licensed for on-premises consumption of alcohol would be subject to the 50% capacity requirement.
But all of these businesses are gonna be required to, to follow the social distancing requirements, the, the mask requirements, and the group size requirements. Those are going to be expected to be complied with amongst all these different businesses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, so I, I see this as, again, moving the, moving the goalpost again a little bit on the, at least on the DERs. I think that for the, for the DE license, this is a, this is an improvement for the DER. I think this is a, probably a negative, in my opinion. The group size, of course, being the same, so that's, that's kind of a wash. The last thing I would say is the issue of age. So, you know, even Dr. Menz, you, you, you kind of indicated that there's not really data out there to say what, what is the appropriate age, but, or taking a policy, a policy choice to say, in, in light of the fact we don't really have, you know, scientific clarification here, we're going to make the assumption that we need to mask these children. And I guess I would take the other side. I would say, in light of the fact that we don't know, I think the data out there, in my opinion, indicates we don't need to mask the children. In fact, I was on KDHU website today, ages zero to nine statewide, there's right out of 1,000 cases for children's zero to nine. Out of, out of 35,000 cases, that's 3.1%. And we know that the symptoms of those children are much less. So I just think it's very difficult to expect someone at that age range to consistently and effectively wear a mask. I already talked to one school teacher that said they're having problems with the children not just touching the mask, but actually, it's, it's just a huge distraction, I guess I would say. I won't, I won't tell you exactly what they said, but it's, it wasn't a good situation. So the idea that I, the idea that we, we at the county level would mandate masks, I imagine children playing, you know, playing in someone's home or in, in the yard type of thing, that we expect these children are going to consistently wear these masks is just not likely. Schools obviously have the authority to do what they wanna do, and they've already made their choice, and so what we do here has nothing to do, nothing to do with them. So I, I guess I would rather default on the idea that trying to have these children mask, effectively mask, is really not effective, I, I don't think, in, in the overall scheme of trying to, to reduce the, the COVID-19. Mr., and Dr. Menz, if you could ask, let me ask you another question. This has been going on in Cedric County now for seven weeks, and with this new order, we're looking at another three weeks, so that's 10 weeks total. Have we seen the improvements we would expect at this point? Are they, are we experiencing that in our data in terms of the, the value of having these orders in place?
I had some remarks prepared to address some of this. Would you like me to make my remarks, or do you want me to take questions at the onset?
You can make your remarks. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Before I make my remarks, I might say, again, I'm reiterating and emphasizing, on the kids, the question is more how trans, how able are they to transmit it to others? We agree that the kids don't seem to get sick as often, although some get sick. So there is a concern about a very small percentage of the kids getting very ill. But the biggest question we have is, how well they transmit it to the elders? So I'll just go ahead and make my remarks, and we can take some more questions.
Okay.
So again, Gerald Menz, Cedric County Health Officer. Thank you for letting me come here. I assume that the presence of the clowns was a complete coincidence in my presence here this morning, and I've, if it's otherwise, I won't take any offense to that. I do want to recognize Dr. Steinheiser's comments. They're very well-received. I think she's hit on major points that are very important to listen to, and I wanna give a shout-out to our healthcare workers in this county. Our death rate is still lower than the other metropolitan counties in Kansas, and I got to assume some of that's due to the excellent care our patients are getting, and our hospitals and nurses and other providers are providing, and it is a very difficult situation for them right now. They are working long hours, very intense hours, and they're having to serve for other duties they don't normally do when the patients are deathly ill. You know, they're restricting family visits, the nurses are having to do a lot of that, family surrogate business with their patients in it. It's been very emotionally tough for them, so I just wanna give them a shout-out. So I'm here this morning to go through the local health order and I, that I signed yesterday, and I'll answer any questions you have about it. As Justin mentioned, this order will take effect this weekend once the current order expires, and we'll go through the Labor Day weekend. I plan to revisit it on a regular basis, and we'll make further decisions based on our metrics as they evolve over this next few weeks. As you know, we haven't had schools in session since this whole thing started in Cedric County. The governor suspended schools early on, and so we are getting ready to enter a phase that we've never been in before. And so there's a lot of unknowns about what the effect of opening the schools is gonna have on kids getting the disease, on transmission to others in the family unit and outside. Currently, Cedric County's rate of positive cases is holding steady at slightly below 10%. I think that you all had access to this graph yesterday that shows our trend over the last few weeks, and you see that we've gone from a high of 13.3% positive cases to now just under 10%, around 9.2%. I am, again, our metrics aren't perfect, they're not as good as we'd like to see, but those are the metrics we have. And so the current recommendation by CDC to reopen schools is to get that rate of positive cases down to less than 5%. And some would suggest you shouldn't open the schools until it's less than 5%. So we have a ways to go yet. So it's very important that we keep working hard on this. We cannot let up. As you, sure, I'm, you've, I'm sure you've heard that Dr. Burks, the White House Coronavirus Task Force head, visited the state over the weekend and visited Kansas City because she was still concerned that the fact that we're still a red state and still have a relatively high number of cases. Right now, as we've said before, our toolbox for controlling this disease is fairly limited. Obviously, we have the issues of wearing masks, social distancing, good hand hygiene, and also testing and contact tracing, as well as restrictions on various businesses and other social activities. We have, it's difficult to determine how much each of those contributes to the control of the, this virus. We have been restricted in this county in the amount of testing. We've not had the capacity to test at the volumes we would like, and that's no one's fault. It's just the fact that the labs can't get all of our tests run, they're behind. So it's, it's been difficult because a lot of the issues that we would like to be doing better are beyond our control. But I do wanna give a shout-out to you all about approving and making it possible to get some greater volume tests in this county with some of the decisions you made in the previous two weeks. I appreciate you doing that, and hopefully that will allow us to do a much higher rate of testing and get quicker turnaround times, which will be a major improvement over our ability to address this. So thank you very much for that. As you know, research surrounding the novel coronavirus, treatments and vaccines are rapidly changing. There is new data suggesting that there is a third group of COVID-19 cases emerging as the disease is able to be further studied. This group has been termed the long-haulers by some in the medical community, and is defined as patients who are either are not recovering their symptoms or who have recovered and are now presenting with new complications, including mild to severe organ dysfunction, including kidney disease and heart disease, as Dr. Steinheiser mentioned. And there are studies coming out now that's showing a significant number of people who are surviving from the severe disease are later on presenting with some heart conditions which are, can be very serious. We don't know yet what the rate is, we don't know exactly how this virus does it, but studies have shown the virus not only affects the lung, but it also affects the liver, the heart, the brain, and the kidneys. So in that sense, it's a little hard to decide what the word recover means. They may have recovered in the sense they're not contagious any longer, but it doesn't mean they've recovered from the illness and they're still suffering from the consequences of. So this disease, even though it doesn't cause severe symptoms in everybody, is still a bad disease, and it's not something any of us wants to get, and it's not anything we want our family, friends, or society to get. I recognize that our community wants to get back to normal as soon as possible, and I also recognize the community is becoming fatigued. There's a lot of anxiety in the community, a lot of depressions occurring. I've talked to the mental health providers at medical school, and I know there's, the rate of mental health problems is increasing, in part because of the effect of this disease on our society. I prefer not to close any businesses. I prefer not to have any restrictions on any businesses at all. I actually prefer not to have to make people or require people to wear a mask. But as I mentioned, I have very limited tools, and so my objective here is to keep the rate of disease as low as possible, prevent long-term complications, and prevent people from getting this virus and spreading it to others. That's all we're trying to do, and we don't have a lot of tools to enable us to do that. So this order continues the mask-wearing mandate. Residents are still required to wear masks or face coveries in public places with children age five and younger not required. There are some exemptions to this rule, as not everyone is able to safely wear a mask. I've also decided to continue operations as it pertains to Phase 2. They add AstraPlan. This allows gatherings up to 15 people. Individuals in these gatherings are still required to wear a mask. Masks are critical in slowing down the spread of this virus. A major change reflected in this order, as all has been discussed, is that allows for fair and equitable environment for local bars and nightclubs to begin to optimistically operate and start opening safely. Businesses classified as drinking establishments and drinking establishment restaurant will be able to operate at 50% of fire code capacity. Both will be required to close to the public at 11:00 PM daily, but may continue carryout and curbside services afterwards. It is my job as a local health officer to mitigate the further spread of this virus in Cedric County. The details of this order and all of my previous orders are decided with much research and data. I do not take these decisions lightly, and I believe these actions are in my effort to control the disease in this county. I'd be happy to take any questions at this point, and I, I'm very sincere, I recognize the effect this disease is having on our population.
Thank you, Doctor. Appreciate your comments. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. And yes, Dr. Menz, I would like to say that I, I appreciate that your cognizance of everything that's going on in the community, and that, that you are trying to be level-headed and very disciplined with this, and I don't think any of us like being in this position because there's no perfect formula on what, how we move forward. My, my only question and concern, well, I actually have multiple, but, but the one I, that I really wanna address is the, the mask for, for children, having them wear it. Would you feel comfortable with us allowing the school districts to make that decision for their students? And also, we, we heard from the lady that runs the childcare center, who said she's been doing it for decades, allowing each childcare facility to do what's in the best interest of their children, of the children that they're supervising? Because, you know, we, we can say that we care about these kids, but if we're not their teacher, if we're not their childcare worker, we don't have that emotional connection with them, where I think a teacher's gonna take far better care of their children than a group of politicians that have never met those kids, and the same goes for the childcare workers. What was your reasoning for that, instead of allowing the schools and the childcare facilities to make the decision on the mask?
So the reason is basically, one, the numbers are not down where I'd like to see them. They're still higher than I feel we should be at this point. And again, I don't have good data on how effective kids transmit it to others. So I'm not terribly worried that the kids are gonna give it to other kids and make them sick, although I admit, we don't have excellent data on how communicable kids are and how likely they are to get sick, but it, so far, it seems much less. But we don't have good data on how good of transmitters they are, and we've talked about this before. We know in general, kids are pretty effective at giving colds to adults. If anyone's had children in this room, I'm sure most of you have. You have a kid below, in that age group, and it seems like everybody in the household's got a cold back and forth. So we just-
And oftentimes, kids are asymptomatic, too.
That's right. So my main concern is the rates are not down where I'd like to see, and if I knew for sure kids didn't transmit it very well, I'd say, be happy with me. But I'm coming from the medical point of view, I'm trying to get this, the rate of this disease as low as possible.
Yeah. No, I, I understand that. I was just wondering in the order-
Yeah.
-why we weren't pushing more of those decisions onto the schools and childcare centers instead of us mandating it. So that, that was my only-
I view it as my charge to give you recommendations on what to get this disease instance down as low as we can in this county.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Menz.
Commissioner Howell?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanna say thank you again for being here, and I do appreciate your, your expertise on, on this. Back to the issue of children. I, I read one report that talked about how typically, family members will get COVID-19, and then in trying to figure out who else might be infected, they will test the family members, and then they'll discover that the children also have COVID-19, and usually in that situation, they're asymptomatic. So the, the conclusion of that was that, is that it appears that children seem to, to get it from their family members rather than the children giving it to their family members. I guess it's not, it's not conclusive, but it seems to be that way. So do you have any comments on that? I mean, it seems like children seem to lag their parents.
Well, I've read those studies, and to me, the studies are not tightly structured, and I would say, how do you know the kids didn't have asymptomatic for a week or two before and the adult got it from the kids? I have an article here, if you'd like it, Dr. Mr. Howell, from a, a review about children and the fact of opening the schools, and it's, it has a number of very well-known experts across the country commenting on how frustrating it is that we don't know more about it, but there has to still be a concern about the kids' ability to transmit it to others. The data is not solid enough to say they don't.
I'll read that when I have time, but if you, if you provide that to the manager, I'll get it from him after this meeting today. Clearly, that, we already know in Kansas that the, the school boards have the authority to make mask policy for the schools, and so what we do here has nothing to do with schools. And, and your, and your, in the, in this order, they're already exempt by the order for the gathering limits for schools and childcare facilities. That's clarified in the, in the order already. So I just would say, I guess, that, you know, outside of school, and again, outside of Wichita, Wichita has their own order that they've already, already issued. So I'd say outside of the city of Wichita, I would be very- So I'd say outside of the city of Wichita, I would be very, I guess, I would feel the right policy is as we had before, age 11. And I would like to make that motion at some point that we would exempt children ages 11 and below in the unincorporated parts of, I should say, not the, outside of Wichita. It's not necessarily unincorporated, but outside of Wichita, unless otherwise superseded by a city order. I think that would be reasonable for us to do that. But let me ask you another question. You made a comment, Dr. Menz, about the numbers are not good enough. I know that's a, it's hard probably to pin down exactly what a number would you be comfortable with, but what is the number that you'd be comfortable with in terms of when we should let this expire?
Again, I try to follow what the national and world experts' opinions are. At least the CDC recommends that the percent positive cases per week be less than 5%. We're around 9.5% now. We had been up as high as 13%. There's another county in Kansas that's been up above the 20%, of their case. That is a rough surrogate of how much community transmission is occurring. And the feeling is, we need to get that community transmission rate as low as possible before the kids go back to school or at least make an effort to.
Well, I guess I'll just make the comment, I don't think that three weeks on this order is going to get us from 9.2% down to 5%. So is it reasonable for us to expect that this is going to continue for much longer, I guess, into the fall?
Is what going to continue?
The mask order is going to continue past the three weeks. This order takes us to pass Labor Day. So question is, I don't think we're going to see it go from 9.6% down to 5% in that short period of time.
I hear you. And we went from 13.3% now down to 9.2% and that's in the last four-week period. So even if I could get another increment that big, that would be a move forward, getting closer to 5. So your question on the mask, I understand that the Kansas City mayor has decided that they're going to have the mask order until 2021. He issued an order that says we'll have a mask order until then. That would just happen this week. I've talked and read a lot of experts who say, I'm sorry, but the mask right now, we think, is one of the best tools we have, short of knowing what will happen when we have better testing capability. Maybe that will become a more dominant part of our control. But I don't see this disease going away anytime soon. I think everybody I talked to says, end of the year, it's going to be with us. The virus will still be out there. Now, we learned a lesson at the end of May. Our rates were very low. We were very successful in flattening the curve. And then we relieved all the mandate on masks. June and July, the numbers, I have no reason to think if we lift the mask mandate before we have a vaccine or a treatment, that the same thing's going to happen again because the virus is still there and we still have the majority of our population susceptible.
So my interpretation of your comment is we probably should expect the mask mandate to continue until we have a vaccination readily available.
I think that's highly likely.
Yeah. I think that's probably where this is going.
I wish it wasn't, but unfortunately, I use the analogy that I hope we have a shocker's basketball team this year. If our coach is winning at halftime, he doesn't go into the locker room and say, okay, guys, we can relax now.
Right.
You've got to keep full-court pressure on this thing or it's just going to raise its ugly head again, like it did at the end of May. I don't like it, but that's, we've learned that that's what will happen.
All right. I don't know if my colleagues agree with me or not, but I would like to, I'd like to make a motion when we're done talking this morning before we go on to the next item on the agenda. I'd like to have a chance to make a motion, so I'll just let you know that, colleagues. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Menz. I appreciate it. And my first question may be more for Justin than you. On section two, item six, it says, section six, day of executive order 20-34 entitled educational facilities is not incorporated in this order. I need a little bit more guidance on what that says.
Justin Waggoner again. Commissioner Dennis, that, to explain that, let me pull up the governor's executive order real quick. Executive Order Number 20-34, the portion that that referred to actually, that was back during phase two of this when schools were closed. And that was part of the governor's executive order. We did not incorporate that because Dr. Menz wasn't closing schools. That's the closest summary I could give. He wasn't putting in place what Governor Kelly had in place, I think it was in May, with regard to schools and that type of thing. So that's why that exemption's in there from Executive Order 20-34.
Very good. So I appreciate that because what I was confused in, this order does apply to schools, though, correct?
This order does apply to schools. That's correct, Commissioner Dennis. There, you know, there's, to explain, as I think was mentioned earlier, the mask gatherings provisions, schools are exempted from those. But the wearing of masks and that requirement does still apply within schools.
Very good. A question then for Dr. Menz, and thank you, Justin, for those answers. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
From what I read in the newspaper and see on TV is that the local school board, especially USD 259, is going to meet tomorrow to decide what they're going to do with schools. But it sounds like that they're going to press ahead with sports. And remember, I'm a very big fan of sports. I announced for Northwest High School, so I do appreciate going to football games and so forth. So, but my concern is, what kind of recommendation would you make to the school boards as they move forward? Should they be looking at, they're practicing now. Should this continue? What kind of recommendations would you make? I don't want this board to take over from their board, but I think that they need some guidance as they're making some critical decisions.
Yeah, I will go into all the things we're recommending. We are meeting with them. We're meeting today at 1:00. I'm meeting with the superintendent from Sedgwick County. And we've met with them already once and we are giving them our best opinions about what they need to do. I would say that opening the schools is a big question mark. It's hard to predict what will happen. I think that everyone appears to be committed to at least giving it a try.
Well, I guess it goes beyond opening schools because they're talking about even if they go remote, that they're still going to be having sports. So is that a good idea or not?
Well, I would say sports that don't have close contact would be pretty safe. I have concerns about contact sports like football. I know that's very close to many people's hearts and I know a lot of students want to compete in that. So I think they're going to have to be careful about. And if you have people on benches, you're going to have to try to keep them separated. It's really not possible to do much separation on the field. The purpose of a football game is to get close to your opponent. So it's a big unknown.
Very good. Well, again, I don't want us to be making that decision from this board.
I don't either.
We have enough decisions to make that are critical, but I think that we need to make sure that we provide the support that each of the school districts need in order to be able to make a wise decision as they move forward.
It's a very tough issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Okay. And Commissioner Dennis, thank you because I was questioning that section to be clarified and about the schools. So, and thank you, Justin, for clarifying that. It makes a lot of sense now why you put that in there. Okay, I don't see any other comments. Commissioner Howell, you wanted to make a motion or something?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion. We would make two changes to the order. One would be to amend the order so that children ages 11 and below would be exempt from the mask order. And then secondly, I'd like to exempt schools from the order so that we can allow them to make policy for themselves. So I'm not sure the best language to insert there, but that's my intent for this motion.
Could we take those separately?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion. We would modify the order to only apply to children ages, children ages 11 and below would be exempt from the mask order.
Okay, that's your motion?
That's my motion, my first motion.
Is there a second among the commission? I don't see a second. I'll ask again, is there a second? And there is not a second, so that motion dies from lack of a second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just change tack then. I think that, again, I appreciate Dr. Menz, but all due respect, you're not an elected official and I think this ought to come from elected officials, one way or the other. And to the extent that we have an order from you, and that's, one of the complaints we've had in the past is, if we're going to have an order, it should come from the commission itself. And that's fine. You certainly have the authority, but I do think the elected officials need to speak to this and either affirm the order or to make it our own, one way or the other. And it sounds like there's not a will to change the order. So I would make a motion that we affirm Dr. Menz's order today.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell, I know Commissioner Cruz asked about separating your motion earlier because what I would feel much more comfortable with is letting the school districts decide. Same with the childcare facilities decide how to handle the mask order for children ages 11 and under or, you know, five and up, however that works, that I believe they're best equipped to make those decisions. So if that is part of your motion that you want to make, I'm comfortable with that because I don't want to arbitrarily pool a number, say 11, because I don't know what the difference between a 10-year-old and 11-year-old would be when they might be in the same classroom where it might be better because obviously, the way birthdays work, Commissioner Cruz mentioned earlier, the four and five or five and six-year-old separation, same we would have with 10 and 11, 11 and 12, however that works, where the schools and those experts can make those decisions. If that's a motion you wanted to make.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion if you give me the chance to speak again. I will make a motion regarding schools. If this is appropriate time, I'd be glad to do that now.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis first.
Chairman. Commissioner Dennis. I've spoken to several of the school districts because what I wanted to know is, do they want us to make the decision on masks or do they want to make the decision on masks? And I think that's important that we can coordinate with them. And what I heard back was, you know, we've got, if every school district makes a decision on masks, we've got 286 different decisions on masks in the state of Kansas. Now granted, if the commission makes the decision on masks, we could have 105 different decisions across the state of Kansas. But when I concentrate on Sedgwick County, we've got 10 major school districts that we're responsible for and those are the ones that I reached out to. And the ones that I was able to speak with were unanimous that they want to have a uniform decision across Sedgwick County rather than having individual school districts make the decision. So I would prefer, and if it comes to a vote, I would vote for the Sedgwick County to make the decision on masks for the school districts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I'll go back to Commissioner Howell, but you did have a motion.
Yeah, I would withdraw my current motion and make a new motion to exempt school districts in Sedgwick County. I should say, school districts headquartered in Sedgwick County, allowing them to make mask policy within those school district.
And childcare.
And I would include childcare in that as well. So my motion is for school districts and childcare to be exempt from the mask order of Sedgwick County.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I have to agree with Commissioner Dennis. I think it's important for uniformity. I think it's important that we understand that we eliminate confusion and that's why I will not be supporting this motion.
There is a motion and a second, and I don't see any other comments. So the motion is to exempt schools and childcare from the mask order. The balance of the order remains in play. So
So Chairman, if I may ask a clarifying question. Are we going to take this exemption as one vote and then we'll have a motion as far as the whole entire order? Or is
We could do that, but according to Mr. Papoun, we don't have to take any formal action to approve it. His order stays as effective.
Thank you for that clarification.
Correct, Mike? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. Thoughts on, okay. Okay. Motion and second. Don't see any other questions or comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meister?
No. So the motion fails three to two. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to my, the motion I made a moment ago that I withdrew, I'd like to go ahead and remake that motion now. I do think that the order needs to be come from the county commission as a board of health and I think we ought to own this. Whatever the order is going to be in Sedgwick County, it needs to be something that we affirm so that it's our order. Again, I appreciate Dr. Menz doing this. You did all the hard work. But we have the right, obviously, the state's given us the right to amend it, to rescind it, to add or subtract from the order or to do nothing at all, let the order stand. And one of the complaints I've heard in the past is, when we allow these orders to go forward without the commission actually making a vote, that it's not our own order. Simply, we're deferring, if you will, to Dr. Menz. And again, as much as I appreciate Dr. Menz, he's not the elected official. I think we need to own this. And so I'd like to make a motion that we would affirm this order from Dr. Menz.
Okay, there's a motion to affirm the order from Dr. Menz. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz, second. Any other comments? Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a comment that yesterday, we, or I'm not sure what day it was, we met with some bar owners here in town. And the one thing that they talked about was an even playing field. And I think that that was well-received by Dr. Menz. I think that he is trying to do the best we can. I would like to ask you one question because a lot of people have sent emails and sent responses. There's a lot of chatter going around. Would you just explain, you know, if we go the opposite end of the spectrum with just open everything up, could you explain in your expert opinion how that might affect our numbers and overwhelm our hospital staff? So if we were to do nothing at all, what would happen?
I'd ask you to look back at what happened at the end of May. There was no order. There was a recommendation that people wear masks, but there was no mandate. In June and July, you look at the numbers on the chart, I assume there was a cause-effect there. And I don't think we want to repeat that because things were getting out of control in July.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning that. You know, the bar owners we met with, the Stop, the Shamrock, Blue nightclub, they all agreed to enforce masking. They all mentioned they wanted to open and hopefully, with the numbers that are right now, we can see that with folks in the community, helping each other understand that we only have so many things in our toolbox and these are the things that we have to, we have to do in order to make sure our hospital systems and doctors like Dr. Chloe and Dr. Steinhauer, you know, they are working day in and day out to keep us safe. And you called them long haulers, you know, as far as having problems with, you're seeing folks who have recovered, coming back with, you know, liver problems, heart problems, brain, kidney, lungs. I mean, those are pretty important organs to live. And I think it's important that we understand that just because you have it and you have recovered, doesn't mean that you're out of the water yet, you're out of the woods, excuse me, yet. So I appreciate that and I have no problem, you know, standing up and affirming this order as a commission because that's our job. And I appreciate the opportunity that we had to speak with those bar owners. Again, they wanted it on an even playing field. And I hope that we can really understand, this is not forever. This is not going to be the rest of our lives. This is only until we can get this thing under control and make sure that everybody in our community is as safe as possible. So that's why I will be supporting this today.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification on the comment you just made, Dr. Menz. Back in May, we did issue a mask order, but we said it was strongly suggested and there were not enforcement penalties tied to that. So I'm looking at, go ahead, sir.
I agree. I said, I used the word mandate. There was no mandate.
And again, we would describe this also as a mandate. But on page six And again, we would describe this also as a mandate. But on Page Six, Section Three, it says, "The aim of this order is public health best practices in order to achieve community-based approach to combat the spread of COVID-19 pursuant to the limits established by the Kansas statutes that provide the authority for this order. It cannot be enforced through criminal charges, fines, or civil penalties." So this is very much like what we did back in May. Would you agree with that?
No. I think there's a major difference. I think people interpret it. End of May, when it's recommended, well, I guess, recommendation doesn't mean you have to do it if you don't want to. I think a mandate says, you should do this. And I would use the analogy when I meet with a patient, and I say, your health is very poor, and you need to take this medication. I firmly encourage you to take this medication. I think they get the message. I need to take this. I say, you know, you know, you could if you want, you could if you don't want. I think the public perceives the importance of it differently, based on how you frame the order.
And I know it's anecdotal. No one's done a study that I know of, but I believe in the community, I would say, inside of Wichita and outside of Wichita, in Sedgwick County, places like City of Derby, for example, I would say that the compliance of mask-wearing is very similar. And I would say, my estimation, somewhere between around 80%, let's say. Maybe four out of every five people are wearing a mask. That's 80%. If I understand correctly, Wichita still hasn't issued any fines, even though they have penalty options. I don't think they've actually issued any fines that I'm aware of. I think that would make the news if they did. So I would say that, I guess, from my perspective, back when we did it in May, we said, you ought to wear a mask. We strongly suggest you to wear a mask. And today, we call it a mandate, and there's no penalties attached. My opinion is, I would couch this as being very much similar. I think what happened in May, in my opinion, is we had very low prevalence of COVID-19 in Sedgwick County. And I use the word catch-up. I think we're catching up with other urban communities. And I know we didn't like that, but I think the reality is, that's what happened. I think that we were spared some of the early, you know, case numbers that other communities saw. And I think what we see right now is, we caught up. Johnson County still is ahead of us a little bit, but generally speaking, we're about normal compared to other communities, other urban communities that are like Johnson County and Sedgwick County. So.
So my observations, I don't shop a lot. I try to stay at work or at home, but I have to go out for a few things. In June, I say 20% of people wear a mask, at best. Depending on what establishment you're at, some of it's even lower. But I didn't go anywhere where it was 80%. And since we've instituted the mandate, I would say, in most of the retail places I've been, you're right, it's close to 80%. So my point is, I think the public perception was, well, you really mean it. You really think this is something we need to do, to get this disease under control. And for some reason, I don't think into May and June, they didn't interpret our words as really that important. But that's my opinion. That's my speculation.
Okay. No other comments at this point? So there's a motion and a second to affirm Dr. Minz's order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Motion carries three to two. Thank you again, Dr. Minz. Are we at the next item? Yes, we are. Madam Clerk, please, or, next item, please.
Item L, consideration of a grant renewal for the Older Americans Act in the amount of $3,200,385 for the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services Fiscal Year 2021 Area Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Annette Grant, Department on Aging. I bring before you today a grant application. It is our annual renewal for the Older Americans Act. This is for fiscal year 2021, which begins October 1st, 2020, and goes through September 30th, 2021. The amount of the grant is $3,200,385,000, and this is through Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services. It is made up of federal funding under the Older Americans Act, and some state dollars, and some nutritional supplemental improvement funding. So this is awarded to all 11 area agencies on aging across the state. There's a funding formula that the state uses to allocate the annual amount. The amount before you is flat funding. However, this is planning amount, as we do not have, the federal budget has not been finalized yet. So this is based on current funding as our planning dollars. So the grant is, as I said, $3,200,385,000. We've got match amount, $89,167,000, Sedgwick County, and then Butler and Harvey County contribute a total of $12,778,000, for a total amount of $3,302,330,000. Out of this funds, the state and the federal government establish certain titles and how much money goes into each title. So we have an amount for administration that is $97,195,000. The Title III-B, which is In Home and Community Services, $450,430, Title III-C-1, which is our home-delivered meal program, $706,563,000. The Title III-C-2, which is the congregate meal program, $1,618,305,000. And the Title III-E, which is the National Family Caregiver Program, is also included in there. And the Title III-D, which is the disease prevention and health promotion programs. So under each one of those, we provide funding. We use that directly. We do a mix. We're both a broker of service, which means we provide direct services. And all of those direct services have to be approved by the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services. And then we work with community providers to fund out and grant those funds out to a variety of providers. And as you might recall, as a Central Plains Area Agency on Aging, we serve three counties. That's our planning and service area, Butler, Harvey, and Sedgwick Counties. So we work with providers to ensure as much as possible that all services are available in all three counties. We also have an advisory council, the Central Plains Area Aging Advisory Council, that is made up of representatives from the three different counties. So each county has their own advisory council under their Department on Aging, and then members, they elect members from each one of those to serve on an advisory council. We also are required to do a public hearing this year due to COVID. The Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services granted some waivers of that, and we did that online. We did that through our Facebook and posted that. We also will be communicating directly with the Butler and Harvey County commissioners to inform them of this plan and let them review that. This is due August 31st to the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services. And as I said, they do have to approve all of the plans before that is finalized. So I would request today that you approve the grant request for the Older Americans Act Fiscal Year 2021 Area Plan, and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
Okay. If there's any questions, I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll second that. That's what I was going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Been a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments being done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Madam Clerk, next item, please. Thank you.
Item M, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoltz, County Manager, two parts to today's item. Lindsay will talk about COVID spending status, and then Brett Shelton will be here to give you some spending requests from the stimulus review team, the citizen group that he meets with, so that we'll handle this in two different parts. Lindsay?
Okay. Good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Purus-O, CFO. So since last week, we actually have had a pretty significant increase in spending, largely driven by decisions that you all authorized last week. So last week, when I reported to you, we were at $8 million in spending total on all things COVID. This week, we're at $13.1 million in terms of actual spending. So we're up to about $1.2 million in the general fund. There's not much increase there on that side. The general fund has stayed flat, and the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding has stayed flat. The bulk of the activity has occurred on the carers' side, and so we are at $9,388,048 in terms of spending there from the county's direct allocation. And so the bulk of that increase is $2.8 million from last week. $2.4 million of that is because we finally were able to put in the orders for that equipment that you all authorized, actually back on June 9th, for EMS, the durable medical equipment. There were a couple of reasons for that delay. Number one, they found out after that had been approved, when they went to make some orders, that actually some of the equipment they had intended to order had some issues. And so they had to go back and find some replacement products to do the same type of service. And then they also were working to refresh the bids, because there was such a large volume. And so they actually managed to save about $100,000 from what was approved when they came before you. So those orders have now been put into the system. We also have entered the contract in the system for that armory lease. We did get the eligibility memo back from Whit O'Brien that said that that was acceptable based on cost reasonableness, and so we were able to enter that cart for about $134,000 for that six-month period. We have another cart, or shopping cart, that was entered for the $73,000 facility HVAC system review that you approved last week. We had another $67,000 entered for PPE gowns and masks for our first responders, based on those routine check-ins with those folks on their burn rates. And then, as you all took advantage of, on Monday, we had another $39,000 payment that was paid for 250 Zoom licenses, so that that's a little more accepted in the community. So again, our care spending from our direct allocation from the feds is about $9.4 million. And so that leaves us, on that side, with $90,248,869 remaining. We know that another $8.55 million of that has already been basically allocated, and we're just working through the process with the cities and the school districts to get those dollars out. Brett will talk about that when he comes up in a little more detail. Then, also because of the actions you took last week to approve the business plan, the economic revitalization plan, we have allocated now, actually entered carts for $2.3 million worth of PPE for those business PPE kits that you authorized. So our purchasing department has been very busy trying to get lots and lots of high-volume orders, and Brett will talk about those details. We are up just slightly in elections to $153,701 for cotton swabs, and wireless keyboards, and mice for them to use for elections. So that is the spending status for this week. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file.
Okay. Don't see any comments. I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other comments being done? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Hello, Brett.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner. Members of the county commission. For the record, I'm Brett Shelton, your deputy CFO. What I'd like to spend the next few minutes doing is just discussing the external funding, give you an update on the external funding, as Lindsay mentioned. And we'll talk a little bit about the schools, the cities, the stimulus review team, and then that economic recovery plan that you approved last week. So just in terms of an update, our schools portal for intake of information closed last Friday on the 14th, and that's a $3.5 million allocation to the schools. We're now working through verifying the supporting documentation, preparing grant agreements that will go out to the schools, and then we'll be able to make those funding allocations. The portal for the cities, the $10.1 million that's allocated for those municipalities in the county closes this Friday. It'll be a similar process to the schools, where we'll get supporting documentation and grant agreements to them for their signatures, and then be able to allocate the money. The only difference there is that we're allocating half of it initially, and then as they bring supporting documentation, terms of receipts and so forth, additional funding allocations will be made. As the manager mentioned, the financial stimulus review team has been meeting, and this morning, we have three requests or pending approvals for your printing awards, for your approval. But before we get into that, I just wanted to open up a little bit of discussion. I'm going to give this over to County Manager Stoltz, because we are seeing some questions from the committee about some, maybe some ways we could be a little more effective. We've been operating on a first-come, first-served basis, and we have an open-ended application process. We think there may be some ways to make that a little bit better. So let me give it over to Mr. Stoltz.
Thanks, Brett. And Chairman and Commissioners, I think the stimulus review team is having a little bit of the same internal discussion that the commission had a couple of weeks ago about how to manage this money. Should it be on total first-come, first-served basis? Or should there be some process to involve people who maybe aren't savvy enough to get in on first-come, first-served basis? They're having the same kind of discussion, and I think that's the point we want to make today. I maybe recommend a few ways to move forward on this. I would, as a recommendation, you could hold off on approving the funding requests today, with the exception of schools and cities that Brett just talked about. You could approve that today without a problem. And then we could implement a hard deadline for middle, late September for public health and social service allocations. This would give us a more chance to market this and discuss it. It also allows us to avoid confusion with business grants, which are due on 9/21. Lindsay and I talked about this yesterday. It might be appropriate, and you all have not had a chance, because of the confines of how we can run meetings, you've all not had a chance to talk with the stimulus review team as a body. And I think there might be value in letting you do that. And we could set up a Zoom call with all of you, all five commissioners, plus the seven stimulus review team members. And you could have a dialogue back and forth across this discussion on how to allocate specifically these public health and social service dollars. And they could tell you maybe their concerns, and you could share your concerns, and then we could come to a resolution on how to move forward with prioritization. Of course, the Board of Commission makes that decision, but I think it would be valuable for you to hear from the stimulus review team. So that's my recommendation today, as we move forward on this. And Brett could facilitate that meeting and get it set up, and we just Zoom you into the meeting.
Well, my observation would be the same. I think it'd be very valuable for us to meet with the committee. By Zoom, I guess it'd be still a public, the public could be able to observe it. It'd be an open meeting, but we'd limit it to a dialogue between the committee and staff and the commission.
It would be a meeting similar to our meetings with the business community, where people could watch, but only commissioners and the stimulus review team committee would have conversation.
Oh, there you go.
There.
Commissioner Cruz?
I did burn it out. I've been talking too much today. Thank you, Chairman. I would love an opportunity to speak with the stimulus review team. And I mentioned last week, both publicly and privately to Lindsay, about the whole first-come, first-served basis might not be the best way to allocate this. Understanding we're under time constraints, I get that, but I want to make sure that this money, the intent of it, is to get to the most needy in our community. And I hope that we're able to do that. And so I welcome that. Would that then be a public meeting, and we would have, it would be open to any and everyone to view?
Yes, correct. It'd be an open meeting for, open to anyone to view.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess Whit O'Brien has weighed in on this. I mean, if they're the experts around, what are they saying? First-come, first-served, or a means testing, or prioritizing?
Those management decisions are up to the county, and so they're okay either way we go. It's just consistency. So in terms of what is being recommended, setting that date out there to give people enough time to respond would work.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. Continue.
Okay. Thank you. So what I think we would do from this point forward, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning with the stimulus review team. We'll have a typical meeting where we'll talk about some applications we've received, talk about the dialogue we've had this morning. And then I think a week from Thursday, a week from tomorrow would be a good time to set up the first public meeting with the commission and the stimulus review team to have that discussion. Commission and the stimulus review team to have that discussion. That way, you can get it in the public meetings notice that goes out at the first of the In terms of how that committee's meetings are going to work going forward, they will be noticed in the weekly public meetings notice that goes out, as all advisory boards are. We're switching our method of delivering those meetings from WebEx to Zoom to better facilitate the ability to have it livestreamed on Facebook, livestreamed on YouTube, so the public can watch these meetings. We're also going to make available ability through the Sedgwick Cares@sedgwick.gov email that will accept public comment that we can read into the record before these meetings. And the agenda for each of these is it goes out on social media on Tuesday prior to the Thursday meeting. So, we're doing everything we can to make sure that the public is aware of the activities of this group. That's kind of based on what we've heard this morning, how we'll move forward with, with that group. As Lindsey mentioned earlier, there's been a lot of activity on the economic recovery plan that you approved last week. I can tell you right now that before I came down, I checked the portal for the safe operating grants. Those are the five thousand dollar grants, and there were five million dollars has been allocated. We'd received two hundred four applications, and it was open on Monday at one o'clock. So, they are coming in rather rapidly. If those are all fully funded, over a million dollars of that would be made available at that point in time. Again, that portal will close on September eleventh, so we're continuing to receive those applications. One thing that we have had some questions about, and I just want to mention it here, is types of business entities, and sometimes some of the documentation that's being requested might not be something that my type of business has. So, I just want folks to know that are going into this portal that the questions are not designed to disqualify anybody from being eligible for the grant. It's just these are specific documents to specific business entity types. Probably the one example is the Certificate of Good Standing with the Secretary of State's office. That's a document that LLC or a corporation would have, sole proprietor would not. But that doesn't mean the sole proprietor's not eligible for a grant. It just is establishing for us on the monitoring side what we need to look for to make sure the LLC is in good standing. So, we make sure that we have the right documentation for the right business type.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
You know, there was a certain date that they had to have that by. Is that correct?
Yeah, they need to have been in business operating on or before March first of this year.
So, what if they were in business, but they didn't have that, they didn't know they had to have that certificate of good standing and have since received it?
We'd look at that in terms of if we can prove that the business was in operation before March first and can provide us with a certificate of good standing, I think we're going to be okay. Maybe there was a tax return filed at the end of last year that would prove that they were in operation and they're currently in good standing. That's the, the criteria that we'll be looking at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Also, as Lindsey mentioned, the three million dollars that was allocated for PPE kits and supplies, she told you that two point three million in shopping carts had been entered. It's now two and a half million. We're still working on getting those supplies ordered. Our distribution and warehousing is gonna, is being set up with the arena, and we're also working with some community partners, small cities, small chambers of commerce to help this, with the distribution out in the county and some other areas. So, there'll be more information to come on that. We hope to be able to be distributing personal protective equipment to small businesses about the second week in September. And then, finally, in terms of communications on the different programs, we've set up a number of methods to, through communications, and they're handling this, but public notice, they've cast a very wide net in terms of making the public aware of these and are now moving into some targeted notices for different groups. For instance, we had a lot of folks that filled out the Notice of Funding Opportunity. We had a number of small businesses that filled out that Small Business Needs Assessment. We want to make sure that they don't think they have submitted an application just because they filled out one of those two things. So, we're reaching out to them to say, make sure you fill out the application if you want to be considered for funding. So, that's sort of a wrap-up of where we are at this point in time. It's been a busy week, and we look forward to busy weeks going forward. I would ask if there are any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I want to thank you, Brent, for all of the explanations today, in addition to working after hours on Monday at my Citizens Advisory Board. I know that every person was very appreciative of the information and the ability to ask questions, so I appreciate you taking that extra time. I know that there's a lot of extra hours that are going into this, and for that, I show my sincere appreciation to both you, Lindsey, and the rest of your team.
You're quite welcome. Glad to do it.
Brent, I got a quick question for you and maybe Tom. So, we, last week was a big week. We approved the, the, going forward with, from, with the testing in the Kansas City group. I'm sorry, I forget their name, whatever it is. The initials, CLR, CRL.
Forgetting it right now.
Right, okay. So, we approved that, and we also approved initial funding for capital costs of Wichita State's, uh, equipment, whatever that, which has now been, since then, things, things move so fast, so they got their, their approval as well from authorization approval. But I, I recall that, so we, so that's an equipment deal. I don't know, was it a million, two or three? I don't think it was ever defined exactly. But I think there was also maybe some startup costs for WSU. In addition to that, I don't know, so does WSU gonna come back and, and, I mean, are you in dialogue with them? Are they gonna come back and say, hey, it's really, was that plus whatever to get this rolled out?
Let me defer to Lindsey on that because that's.
Well, either one. I just wondered if there's, what's, if WSU has additional, I assume they come to you guys and say, hey.
While Lindsey's getting the podium, Andy and I talked, Andy Schlapp and I talked, when I say talked, we text back and forth, but yesterday. And we both have work teams identified now to forge ahead with all of the above of what we talked about. And Lindsey, do you want to add in?
Yeah.
Sure. So, what we would need them to do basically, because we talked about how they're subrecipients, so now they have to comply with our rules, actually, we have given Mr. Thomas, who just fortuitously walked in at this moment, we will work with them to get the invoices and to run them through our procurement process to vet that and make sure that it complies. And so, yes, we would contemplate bringing that back to you for approval.
For formal approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Thanks, Brent. I don't see any other, you get, are you still have more?
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Is this a receive and file report? I think it was just information. It is, okay.
We, do they have to vote on the school and city allocations?
Not at this time because we don't have grant agreements signed and returned. So, this is just receive and file the information.
Okay. Well, a motion to receive and file.
Second.
A second, a minute. Motion a second, receive and file. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Lindsey. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item N, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman of Commissioners, Joe Thomas.
Hi, Joe.
Yes, good morning, sir. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on August thirteenth, we have five items that we would like to have your approval for. Our first item is Bridge Improvements. This is the bridge located on two hundred and forty-seventh Street West between seventy-seven and eighty-fifth Streets North. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Claver Construction Company in the amount of five hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Our second item is four tandem axle dump trucks. They're equipped with salts, sand spreaders, liquid anti-icing and de-icing systems for fleet management. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Truck Center Companies, Proposal Number One, and that's in the amount of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty dollars, and establish contract pricing for option number one and the non-warranty items for three years at the rates listed. And I'd like to mention that the approval of this item will be contingent on the approval of additional budget authority that you'll be assigning from fleet contingency to fleet management operating budget as you consider that in consent agenda R. Item number three is the Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness Grant Exercises for Emergency Management. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Acentra, and that's in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Item number four is Cedric County Courthouse District Attorney, second and third-floor remodel for project services. And the recommendation is to accept the bid from Compton Construction Services LLC in the amount of six hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred dollars in established unit price in the shown. Item number five, our final item, is Laboratory Information Management Systems, or known as LIMS for Regional Forensic Science Center. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from the Computer Solution Company of Virginia LLC, doing business as Forensic Advantage Systems, and this is for a total not to exceed of three hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred dollars, and that's for a contract period of three years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Chairman, I will have questions on item two, so therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items one, three, four, and five.
Okay. Been a motion in a second to approve items one, three, four, and five. I don't see any other comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I always have questions on trucks, so these trucks normally are going to run for a million miles, and we're trading them off at two hundred and fifty thousand miles. I know we came up a few years ago when I had the exact same questions with a new grading system. I never saw the grading system, and I don't quite understand yet how it works because I can't believe that these vehicles are not still serviceable, that we're getting ready to spend eight hundred thousand dollars for. I guess I'd ask to ask Penny, one of the things that you said is that you're worried that we're going to lose a transmission or an engine off of one of these. Tell me what it costs to replace an engine.
Good morning, Penny Poland, Fleet Management. Thank you. An engine replacement runs about thirty thousand dollars. So, when you're looking at trucks, when you say they should go a million miles, that's really over the road miles. These trucks are not over the road miles. They're stationary. The majority of the work they're, they're doing is within a small area. So, you really need to look at the engine hours instead of mileage.
Okay. And I know I got an email from Jim Weber that says that these vehicles aren't stationary, so I guess I still got questions on idle time, on how, how that we get so many hours on an engine when we're worried about fuel savings. There's a lot of things that go onto this. I truly don't understand your grading system. I think we're truly, to get the Commission up to speed, I think we need to defer this item until we understand fully your grading system on how that we're getting to the point that we're replacing two hundred thousand dollar vehicles with very few miles on them.
Okay, so the grading system is fifteen points. We put in the.
I know what it is. I just don't understand how that we pick these points out. How, how does this number of points mean that we're going to get rid of a two hundred thousand dollar vehicle?
Commissioner, sorry. We can, we can go ahead and defer. Penny has done extensive analysis on this. We, we talked about it. It's been a couple of years. Maybe it's time to bring it back to staff and kind of go over it with the, with the Commission. So, we, I don't think there's any time issue with deferring this and give us a chance to bring it into a staff and maybe go through the, the policy that Penny just, I can't remember when we changed it. It's been two or three years ago now.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. Time flies, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. When Penny was meeting with us yesterday, one of the things she mentioned that we had talked about, and I know she also mentioned Commissioner Howell brought it up, is maybe keeping a couple of those dump trucks to see how long they could go and actually using that as a test, and maybe proceeding with still buying them, but maybe continuing using the old ones to see if we can't get, because like you were mentioning, Commissioner Dennis, I, I know there are construction companies here in town that send those things well past a million miles. So, if, if we might just start doing a test, because I think Penny and her staff take exceptionally good care of these dump trucks, that it would be good for us to know how long, how long it could go. So, potentially, us taking a motion to keep that and work with Public Works to make sure they stay on the road, to see if we can't get it up to three hundred or four hundred thousand miles is a, is a great study, I would think.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Penny, thank you so much for being here today. Is it, would it be a correct statement that you're following the policy set in front of you?
We are, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I've mentioned this, I don't know how many times in the past, but I think we do need to get some data. I do, I do happen to notice here that the two older trucks that are being proposed to be replaced actually have less miles on them and less hours on them than the two newer trucks. So, I don't know how that happens, but I, I think when you look at, you know, if you have truck, truck, different trucks that you can choose from, it's probably a natural tendency to pick the nicest vehicle on the, on the lot that's available at that moment. I would expect I would do the same thing. But we, we do need to intentionally, I guess, put, put wear and tear on the older vehicles, and that's not happening naturally. I don't know if we can make it happen in terms of choosing to use the older vehicle over the newer vehicle just to, just to wear out, if you will, our own stuff before we hand it off. But I understand we, we don't want to add numbers of vehicles to our fleet because that's problematic, but I do think that we, we've got to find a way to administratively get some more data. And I, and I think that Commissioner Dennis is absolutely correct. I know that we may not want to go to a million miles, but maybe we should get to a half million miles. That'd be pretty reasonable. And, and to the extent that these things are used locally, if we did have a breakdown, which would be extremely unusual, I don't know if we've ever had a breakdown, but if we had a breakdown, at least we're local. And a thirty thousand dollar engine, as bad as that is, we could stomach that once in a great while. I don't want, wouldn't want that to happen all the time, but it's never happened as far as I know. And so, I would think that getting, getting the data on these trucks is something we have, we just, we need to science this out. We need to get some experience on using these trucks longer than we currently are. And I know they're ten years old. I don't, I don't drive a vehicle that's ten years old. I drive one much, much older than that. And it's dependable. And I know our, our Cedric County assets are extremely well-maintained. We do everything we possibly can to keep them reliable and functional and, and dependable. And so, these are, these are very, even though they're ten years old, they're very nice vehicles. And I know that other cities and townships and other construction companies, as Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, they love to buy our equipment because they can, they can get basically extremely well-maintained equipment and run them for many, many, many years in the future. And we take all the depreciation, and they get the benefit of a, of a great vehicle that doesn't have much use on it. So, I think we need to change our ways. We, we need to intentionally keep these vehicles and put wear, put wear on them and see how long they'll go, and give them experience. And I don't think we're going to see anything terrible happen for doing that. I think what we, the taxpayers want us to wear things out before we hand it off, hand them off when they, they have, you know, seventy-five percent of their life is still in, is still in them, so. I mean, I, I'd like to make a motion to defer this item, but I, I see that Penny wants to say something, so I'll stop.
No, no.
Okay. I make a motion that we defer item, item two.
Second.
Motion a second to defer item two. I don't see any other comments, or Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Is there a timeframe on, on this deferral?
I would leave it up to manager to bring us back to a staff meeting, and then we can reschedule it for an agenda when it's the appropriate time. I don't know, we need to give ourselves an arbitrary timeline to get it back to us, but it's, I'll, I'll leave it up to staff to figure out a way to, to brief us at a staff meeting, and then we'll get it back on the agenda if it's appropriate.
I, Chairman, I believe we can be ready ASAP. Penny is, okay, so doctorate in science on this topic, so she's ready. I think it makes sense to have Jim weigh in. He's the operations component of this, what it would do to his operations, and I think there may be some reasonable extension of life for some, for experimentation and data collection purposes, but there are some risks when you begin to run equipment, to high maintenance costs and also failure. So I think a staff meeting is appropriate, and I'll calendar it as soon as possible.
Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So we'll have the policy that was written in 2017, a deep dive into that as well?
Yep. Correct, ma'am.
Okay, been a motion and a second to defer. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Well, it's a policy that I think we have a problem with, so I want to make sure that we review that policy. I don't want to say that we're making decisions based on something that I'm not sure is, is the best policy for the Cedric County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We will review this item and the policy upcoming. Okay, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items O through V. There is an item W on the consent agenda, but that is actually a repeat from last week, so we can scratch that. And then, so I'm asking for approval of O through V, and I want to mention on item T, that our regional forensic, I don't know if I talked with all of you, our regional forensics, Science Center Administrator is going to be Shelley Stedman. She's here today, just fortuitously, on a, on another item. We went through a process, and Dr. Stedman, of course, is a longtime county employee, and I just wanted to kind of acknowledge her while I had the opportunity and ask that you approve these consent items today.
Okay, it's a motion for items O through V with the, with the exception of?
W is.
W.
Yeah.
Which was previously approved. Motion, and I make that motion.
Second.
Second. And Commissioner Cruz.
I do just have one thing that I wanted to, to point out. Item P on consent, we have, we are launching a new program at the Health Department. Thank you, Adrian, for bringing it to my attention, but it's called 24/7 Dad. We oftentimes focus on women and children and leave out fathers. And I'm excited that we're able to offer a program, because as, as, as changes happen, I know a lot of single dads that are out there, and I think it's important that we, we focus on the whole family. And I, I just want to point out the 24/7 Dad Fatherhood Program that will be launched next year. So I'm happy to discuss that and wanted to highlight it. Thank you for bringing that to my attention yesterday, Adrian. I'm, I'm incredibly excited about this program for our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On, on item R, it's a transfer of funds that is in part to cover $192,000 of shortfall for the four dump trucks we just spoke about a minute ago. And with that in mind, I would like to, to change the transfer amount from 684, 481, I'd like to change that to 494, 481. That's a $190,000 reduction in the transfer. And we can always take this back up when we get the four dump trucks back on the agenda. We can make the transfer at that time. So, yeah, thank you. I mean, that's my motion, is to make the amendment to item R.
Okay, it's a motion, is there a second?
I did second it.
Oh, and Commissioner Dennis seconded it. Okay, it's a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the addition to the exemption or the change to item R. Madam Clerk, I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mike.
Just very quickly, Commissioners, just to let you know, we heard from our county lobbyists, the state finance council is meeting tomorrow to look over a couple of the executive orders that the governor has issued. They don't, they're only reviewing these orders, they don't, they can't amend or, or take any other action regarding these orders. And this afternoon, I mean, our legislative session for 2021 is coming up, going to have to start getting some ideas for a platform going. I have a meeting this afternoon with our new communications, Strategic Communications Director, Makiem Ashford, and hoping to get started on that process as well for the county, so that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Next item, please.
Other.